If everyone could just, uh...
Good job.
Set up. Good morning. I'm Jeff Stone and calling to order this meeting of the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees, 9:00 AM on Thursday, January 26th. Hi, my name is... And as we always do, as we wait just for people to fill in and gather, we have some road conditions today. If we could just go around the room and introduce ourselves and remind everybody of our role here. Bob, you want to start?
Hi, congratulations. Thank you.
Dr. Morley, IT Department. Ryan Noble, IT.
Anthony Dadd, Campus Safety.
Mark Pachola, Chief of Campus Safety and Emergency Manager.
Arnold Plana, Comptroller.
Kathy Clastow, VP of IRAC.
Colleen Quinn, Professor of Mathematics, also the College Senate Chair, which is our central governance side.
Hey, Lassino, Executive Dean of Nursing and AA ECC President.
Joe Lundee, Director of Academic and User Technology Services in IT.
Rich Rojack, Building and Grounds.
Paul Daniu, Business Manager, Wiscus Esso.
Mike Verone, Interim Vice President of Marketing and Communications.
Eric Newell, VP of Enrollment Management.
Colleen Reedy, Vice President of Workforce Development.
To the exit.
Kerry Cahn, Executive Dean of Health Sciences.
Juan Martinez, Dean of Business and Public Service.
Sidney Butler, Vice President of Learning Services.
Kristen Goss, College and Air Extracurricular Chair, City Campus. Our Baking and Pastry Arts students, Victoria and Mara, here to explain to you the pastries that they made for you fresh this morning and to tell you a little bit about our program.
All right, be right back to you. Jeff Stone, Board Chair.
Candace Morrison, Trustee.
Lynn Luthen, Trustee.
Good morning. Adhim Segai, Officer in Charge of Provo's.
All right, well, thanks, everyone. I know it's a... On screen, let's see. I see, Bob, is there anyone else remote?
Bill is just joining.
Bill Ruder. There you go. Bill, good morning. Everyone knows Bill.
I'd like to begin.
Before we go to our culinary, just want to welcome back officially in person Candace Morrison with congratulations on the birth of your daughter since we have last seen you. Congratulations. She's lovely, and if anyone has a chance to get with Candace and look at her phone, I recommend it. And, of course, she has an older daughter, too, who's getting used to having a new sibling. So, congrats, and we've missed you in person, but thanks for participating. Denise Wilson is on the way. Amanda Lau had a personal thing come up in her family that makes it impossible for her attendance today. We have the three of us here, and we're looking to achieve our quorum of six. Marcel was ill this week, and it was questionable whether he could make it, so we'll have to just see. I believe Kerry will be here, and whom am I missing? Denise, oh, and Melody. I think Melody was scheduled to be here. So, with the road conditions, what I think we can do is please start with our culinary presentation.
Sure, ladies, would you like to explain what you baked?
Sure. So, this morning, we prepared some Lothari scones that were baked fresh, and the other fresh one was Bearclaws, made by Elijah. And then we have some Plassek that was made by Kurt. He's gone through the culinary program, and he's just starting his pastry arts program last semester. And we have some coffee cake, double chocolate muffins, and morning board. They were all made by Yumi, who's doing the pastry arts program.
So, the baking and pastry arts program is a one-year certificate program. We have a kiosk that is open in the spring semester, so if you are interested in ordering anything from the students, we take orders. We just need notice to do it. So, I would say 48 hours is the shortest time, but a week is a great starter for the students. So, we encourage you to come visit us at the kiosk. The students are going to start their internship. They have to get over $100 of baking experience out in the industry. We place them at all different bakeries, and they craft their skill and hopefully get hired at those pastry establishments. We work with Butter Block. We've worked with Dessert Deli. We're sad that Dessert Deli is closing, but we have a lot of great collaborations among the community that the students are going to go out and hone their skill. So, we welcome you to come to our department and order some baked goods and enjoy their kiosk. Could you tell them the hours, ladies, of the little kiosk that's adjacent to the cafeteria?
Okay, so it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We open up at 8:00 and it goes until 1:00. So, yep, we have a lot of desserts, and I actually enjoy being down there. It's a lot of fun.
What, I just wanted to ask each of you, what prompted you to go into culinary? Was it a lifelong interest or something that just came to you recently?
I'd say with my lifelong interest, since I like personally like doing our products, decorating, more into like decorating cakes and frosting with that. So, like, I'll just give this a try for the baking and pastry arts program, and I like it so far.
I've wanted to do this since I was little. I want to be able to open up a bakery one day and like help the community that I own.
That is great, great. Everyone in the room should at some point make their way over to this table and pick something up. Will. I'll be doing that as soon as someone else starts talking.
I'll follow you.
So, thank you, young ladies, for being with us, and we're very proud to have you as part of our culinary program and wish you very well with your academic pursuits and after that with your baking and professional pursuits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. That's so nice. All right, I'm going to wait to call roll until we have our quorum established. There's Kerry, one, two.
Hello. Good morning.
Denise, Denise will be here. So, when she gets here, we'll call roll, and we can commence the meeting. Come on in.
Good morning.
In the meantime, Adhim, I know this is scheduled for your report, but if we could start just with an informational session for a moment about particularly the storm. I know we have Mark and others from our security apparatus here, and it's put a lot of pressure on the college, the storm, the resultant damage at North, or at City Campus, how we've responded to that. I think that's on the minds of all the trustees, everyone in the room. It's been quite the thing since we last met, so I thought it might be a good place to just start. Let's put that right out on the table and figure out where we are with City Campus and what's been going on.
Absolutely. Good morning, everyone. So, I think we've been really struggling with as a community, as you know, with the storm. But first, I think it's only appropriate that we pay our condolences to the family that lost individuals in our community, but also who were affected by the storm in different ways. So, I think it's important that we acknowledge that. The other thing I think we also need to acknowledge, all those individuals, especially our central workers who, not just ours, but in the community, who really worked hard to make sure that our Western New York was safe and healthy as best as possible. I attended a ceremony that our governor put together to honor our heroes, who were ordinary individuals, as you saw in the media, doing different things to help individuals. So, they were honored, probably 50 or more individuals, so I was really grateful to be part of that ceremony. With that being said, I think one of the things that we also know that all of our three campuses were challenged during the storm in one form or another. But more importantly, our city campus got probably the most damage. As a result of that, we needed to think through quickly, and I'm going to tell you, that was real quick, one of the most challenging but rewarding experience for me personally. But I gotta, I gotta say that it's because of the entire team of the college, and I have a few people here that's going to help to talk through some of that, because I think it's fair, they were on the ground helping and making sure that our campus moved, and we did the transition. So, I think one of the things we needed to do is our goal was to make sure that our city students stay within our city campus because they chose to be there. The other thing that was important for us was to make sure that, as a college, we did not go into another building in our community, that if we are able to use our own building, that we do that, and that's what we were able to do. So, again, that was also grateful, I was also grateful, and a lot of us, that we were able to pivot into of our buildings, right? The Oak Building and the Athletic Center was the two buildings that we focused on to make sure. Now, there were some few classes that went online, but not the majority. We have 140 section that will be in offer for the spring semester at the city campus. And so, out of that, the entire 140 section, we were able to pivot to our Oak Building as well as to the Athletic Center. So, what that meant was for us to, just to give you a sense of what we needed to do, we took one room in the Athletic, that was a cardio room, and converted that into a classroom, because we knew that. Now, I got to tell you, we do have still a workout room, so we didn't take everything out, so we just reconceptualized how we need to use that. So, we do have our gym. I don't want us to think that we took that experience out. And so, one of the things that we really had to do is really look at our classrooms in both of the site, about 28 of them, to figure out how we really could adjust to make sure that we did that. The challenge were the two program that we have that needed hands-on. So, our culinary program was one that we could not really create a kitchen setting, even if, we tried, we attempted, there was just no way that we could do that. So, and I'll have Kristen and Juan talk a little bit to what we did there within the community, as well as our building management. Again, that was also difficult for us to mimic, to put a lab within these two sites. So, we moved that to note. We tried as best as we can to not alter any student's schedule. So, all the times in which those schedules, those courses were scheduled, they remained the same. So, that was our goal, was also to not create a situation for our students to perhaps change their timing and days of offering of those courses. And we were very deliberate about communicating, our marketing, Shannon, I know Mike was out of Shannon, who was helping us. We were constantly communicating and updating our students to make sure that they know that we are in process to making sure that first day, that they know where they were going to go and how things were going to play out. I want to bring Rich, if you don't mind, Rich, if you could come, Rich Rojack. Come over here, Rich.
Okay.
I just, I just thought it's important that all those individuals who were here to talk. So, Rich, can you talk a little bit about what we needed to do as far as facilities?
Yes, so, talking with Dr. Segai, we successfully moved the entire post building. Not, students and faculty were Dr. Segai's priority. We got all of them over to Berkeley and to 45 Oak with an amazing plan. I couldn't believe we actually pulled it off, but we did.
We did.
So, yeah, it's, most of the staff is out of, aside from some security and maintenance staff and some IT. The majority of the post building's emptied. Everything ran super smooth. Everything is running super smooth. So, it was a great plan. That's all, you know.
And I just, and thank you, Rich, but I got to tell you, I was on the phone with Rich and his team and Paul to make sure this was a smooth transition. So, when we talked about moving that, the cardio room into the classroom, they'd like, right now, right now, the next day, it was done, right? So, that's the kind of leadership and skill set that we have within our facility and others, you're going to hear a little bit more about others, too, but that's the kind of thing that we did. Equally, we also ensured that the student service side would need it to be supported as well. So, we mimic a library, we mimic a tutoring center. I had them just change an entire office into a tutoring space because we couldn't accommodate, so we wanted to make sure that our student had a space. So, that is another area that we were able to mimic and make sure that our students had the best experience. We also were very clear to our students that they have the North Campus and the South Campus as additional resources. So, we did work with transportation to make sure that our transportation aligned appropriately. Daycare was a challenge for us to mimic a daycare, so we did work with our Northland partners and other partners who have a list of resources, daycare within the vicinity. But I know Eric Nelson went, also talked to those students who had arranged, but there were 23 students who needed daycare. We worked with them individually to assist those students to make sure that they're able to either switch their classes to North to make it more convenient, or we've tried to give them other alternatives. So, that was a little bit challenging, but other than that, I think we were able to accommodate. The last thing we also did where facility was involved very closely was our services for food. And so, we used the concentric stand at the Athletic Center and converted that, and that was another one that was not functioning well, where our facility team came in, and I don't know, did you guys work overnight to get that done, because that was done?
Yeah, we worked some long hours during this whole endeavor.
Yes, yeah.
I do want to add one thing, though. So, the day of the move, that Saturday, we met with Dr. Segai, and she worked right along with us the whole time to facilitate this and make sure everything got over, and we now call it the audio diet, trying to keep up with her.
I did not know that.
Trying to keep up with her through the whole process. It was a lot of steps, but a lot of steps.
But again, I appreciate that, but I think we all had one thing that we needed, and we may had approached it differently, but it was about the student experience, and how do we ensure that? So, they come in and not fail. It is our problem, and they understand issues, and they pivot. Let me just tell you, they use this space, we had seating arrangement, right, going across all the Oak as well as in the Athletic Center, and have all the furniture. Facility folks went in, got all the furniture from our post building and created. So, I do invite board members, if you have a chance, or other our staff who haven't been at the, at the city campus, please go and visit it, because I think we really did an extraordinary job to do that. So, thank you so much, Rich.
Okay.
And then the other side is Joe, Joe Lundee. In order to function and especially to perform instruction, we need our technology team to ensure that was going to happen. So, Joe Lundee? And I asked... In order to function and especially to perform instruction, we need our technology team to ensure that was gonna happen. So Joe Lindy? And I asked Joe last minute to come, so.
So, one of our concerns was the technology at Oak Street. Why, we have, Oak Street has not been highly utilized. So why we had functional technology in there, it wasn't the most modern equipment. So we, now that these rooms were gonna be used back-to-back, we knew we had to do something. So Bob Tramoni took a big leadership role. He called me, I remember the call, and he said, "We're gonna replace 23 projectors in three days." And I'm like, "What are you doing?", you know? I'm like, "Is this possible?", you know? And so he put the plan together. His team worked endlessly to not only replace the projectors that are in the ceiling, there was wiring that we had to do there, and then replacing all the screens, because they were a four-by-three aspect instead of the 16-by-9 that we're used to with the widescreen televisions. So in three days, 23 projectors were replaced, which was great, because we had minimal issues with instructors calling us. In addition to the wonderful work that the audiovisual department did, our computer techs had to, we took some computer labs actually out of Oak because of the minimal use of some of these rooms. So we now had to rebuild some of these computer labs back. So the techs were great, they brought computers over. We had some computers shipped from North Campus just to get these computer labs up. We ended up bringing, building out five computer labs and rooms. It was just really great. And then we brought over all the staff needs for student services, such as the security needed, you know, their ID printer, their camera. Transportation needed their equipment as well, the library, the open lab tutoring, all that equipment needed to be brought over. Then we also worked with all the staff to just make sure they have the technology they needed, phones and everything. So I think it was just a really great example of how ECC can come together and overcome these challenges. Because as Rich said, like, it was wonderful working with everybody. I mean, everybody had feet on the ground, nobody said no. You know, if we needed a lab, we would just call Rich and say, "We need furniture now", you know? Furniture would just like boom, you know, up here out of nowhere. And so it was just really great to see everybody coming together.
Absolutely. And again, it's just a testament of the leadership and the collaboration within the department. But as you see, you hear the common theme, right? It's about the student and that we needed to pivot. I think with that as well, it's important to note that our faculty played a huge role in this to make sure that this was successful. Now, I want to also say, it's an ongoing work in progress. As things arise, we're gonna address different things. But our faculty was just tremendous. The union leadership within the faculty, as well as our administrative union were great, and the other two union as well, great in supporting us to move and pivot in this way. We also established a faculty office where there is a hub, where we have our faculty office, have their time outlined so that students have office hours. So we were very deliberate, but I gotta tell you, it's because the leadership of all these individuals and the willingness to really pivot, but not only pivot, to make sure that this was not just something that we threw together, right? We wanted to be as specific as making sure the furnitures were matching, if possible. If not, we, but we really wanted to make sure that our students knew that this was very intentional, we were really thinking about their experience and not just put things together. But this was because of everyone's support. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. And then the other piece, and there's a lot more with respect to that, Andy Anacy and Francine, and there was many other folks, but schedule to do this in the system, it is complicated, you could imagine. So to have someone sit specifically, Andy Anacy, sit there for eight hours, nine hours, go through schedule and workday so that when students are printing their schedule, it is really accurate. So changing rooms, making sure that the room, that took a lot of work, working on Saturday. So a lot of work on the backend took place so that when the students went into workday, they could have it. We also had Gail and other teams, there's a lot of other folks. I feel like I'm an Oscar or something. But, you know, all these folks also, we had a help desk so that when students came in, they know where the class is and redirect them. So we did all this work because everyone knew that this is something that we needed to take care of so that our students come in, I could feel that, yeah, there was an issue, but I'm good. The one, the other important piece of this puzzle was our security. So Anthony, you mentioned. So security has been intimately involved, as you can imagine. But Anthony, I know Mark was out on training, so he gave Anthony the leadership to make sure first day. So I remember going in at 7:30, Anthony was outside and just directing the traffic. To note, the South Division and Oak, it's an intersection, it's a very concerning, intersects that it's very busy. So we really thought about how do we do this for our students who take the public transportation, who need to cross the street. So we are asking our public official to help us with that a little bit more, to really revisit that, because that is something that certainly cut me up, thinking that that is really not a very safe spot. But Anthony and his leadership and under Mark, they did tremendous job with that. So Anthony, you want to talk a little bit?
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
I've watched the board meetings many times, my first time being here, so thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
I found it interesting, the Adyem Diet. On that Tuesday, I try to walk to stay in shape, but on that Tuesday, I have a step counter. And she was there first thing in the morning, and I wind up putting in over 10,000 steps without going to the market. I got it on my thing, I was telling, I said, "I put in over 10,000, almost 11,000 steps." It was definitely a team effort, and I think it worked out really, really well. I think the students were in, had a real good understanding of what was going on and was in good spirits. We did help with the help of IT, have those printers and everything moved over, it's sort of convenience to the students. So we were able to do the IDs, bus passes, and have a, it's a special step you have to take for the one pass now, which ultimately saves college funds. We use one card now. We've combined the card, but there's a step that's required. And so with transportation there, we were able to, we were able to be able to do that step so that the students have an ID bus pass that's active at our particular campus now. And many of our students at the City Campus really require a bus pass is really important to them, because many of them don't drive, and that's their primary means of transportation. So it was important to get that room up on 104, to get it up and get it operational. We manned it till 6 o'clock Monday through Thursday, and on Friday till 4 o'clock. So we had an opportunity to make certain that we serviced the evening students, because we have a group of evening students that come in, and if they don't receive services, they can be upset. And they also need, from time to time, their bus pass ID systems. So that went well. And again, we did put a vehicle and officer on the corner of South Division and Oak. It, we didn't get any, we didn't get much usage of it as far as anybody asking us or us helping anybody. So it's something that I'm sure we're gonna revisit. But I think for the beginning of the semester, I think the presence, it was helpful for them to see it and to answer any questions. I think that's what they did mostly was, you know, "Where's this building at? Where do we go?" We didn't actually help anybody with crossing, but we were there to answer questions and that sort of thing. I think that was, that was pretty helpful. We also opened the South Division and North Division doors so that the shuttle now picks up on North Street, because the shuttle, of course, couldn't pick up at the campus, so it's more convenient for the students. So through the morning hours to 4 o'clock and before dark, we have the South Division door open so that students can come from the AF and directly into the building and make it more convenient for students and staff. Because we, the staff also was kind of displaced a little bit from what their norm was. And I think we addressed that pretty well. Overall, I think it was very successful. And it was really good to see the teams work together with maintenance and with IT and everybody to get everything up and operational and moving and flowing.
Absolutely. Just to see Anthony and the police, the Buffalo Public Police, as well as some of our faculty who are outside directing traffic, it was pretty cold, wasn't that, you know, but it was cold enough, but people were out there doing that to make sure that not only our students, but also our faculty and staff to just move and move the traffic, that this is, this is gonna be okay. So thank you so much, Anthony. And I think same thing as where Anthony was mentioning about our staff. We also did, that was a secondary process in making sure that our staff, who normally would work out of the post, needed also a space to work. So we had staff present at Oak in the past. So we kind of worked with that team to make sure, so that everyone got that information. And we also did the best we can to equip them with what they need in order to function. The idea here is number one, for our students not to be displaced, but also our staff to function so that we are running the business as appropriate. Again, it's the faculty, it's the staff, it's the student, to get that support and to make the place run. We will have more detail as to the status of the post. We have Ser Pro, Paul, Danielle, we'll talk to that a little bit more later, but we are going to give you an update on the status on that. We have the team there. Right now, the team is asking us to not go in there anymore. Friday will be our last. We will be communicating that to the college community. People have not been going in only as needed, really directed by security as well as our facility, when we need to get information, or items or resources from there. But we did everything we can to make sure that our faculty went into their space and got the necessary resources that they need, our staff, you know, with the mind that we're not moving, so just take, you know, the necessary things that you need. But as of Friday, we will not be able to go in as freely as we were going in so that they could do their job. But I will, with the team, will give you a little bit more detail and update on that at a different point from the construction company that is in charge of the post right now. Folks, did I forget anything, anyone that's been with us? I just want to make sure I touch on as best as I can with it. Colleen, it was our first week, she did awesome, running around. But we all ran, and our, like I said, it was the best thing to see our student sitting there. I just wanted to note, because I think it's important, similar, we try, at least on the senior leadership, to have a present at every campus. We want to make sure that our students at North as well as at South, and some of the students that are taking online, that we are also supporting them. I do say that we have some work to do. That first week is an important week for all of our students and for us as well. We do have an opportunity to do a lot better with that of just heading the conversation with Colleen Quinn about some of the things that we could do a little bit different at our South Campus, because of the way that building is set up, to ensure that they are supportive, especially the first week. So we will be doing some additional work to do that at that campus, as well as in North to make sure that our students at every campus are supported, particularly the first two weeks of the semester. So a little bit more work, and we'll continue to update the board on some of those things that we're gonna be doing coming into the fall semester especially.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's huge.
That is amazing. And it, just to see what can happen when we do not operate in silos, wow. Lots of words. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Thank you, all of, everything, just spectacular.
I just have a comment too. You know, it's so often in the public sphere, be it a college or the county, whatever, it's unforeseen events occurrences that really show what we have amongst us in order to react. And I just think that the team and with your leadership just acted superbly in just this bizarre, crazy situation that happened. And the storm was bad enough, having to move a college in the middle of that is really something. So I joined in with Denise in congratulating everybody on the team and to make this happen and to make the school ready for the students when they started, so thank you.
And I know Mark, you had a strong hand in a lot of this as well. I saw you intimately involved with all of it. Is there anything you wanted to add that we hadn't heard yet?
I was actually at about a three-hour debrief. I sat on the County Emergency Managers Board Tuesday night, all the emergency managers. We spent over an hour with Mike Frye. He went through it step by step when National, he worked for National Weather Service. They couldn't have called the blizzard any better. I mean, they were off by three inches, wouldn't have predicted, and the typhus. So kudos to National Weather Service. Couple of things, the, I spoke to County Emergency Managers. Morning, FEMA inspection team is on deck today. They got in around 8:30 this morning. They will be going around, and I am told they will visit City Campus. I spoke with Dr. Segai earlier once I get the call, I'll let the facilities know and we obviously will be going to show them the damage. But it is a long process. The November storm, we got briefed on that Tuesday night. November storm has been approved, it's moving forward. They're still waiting for full federal approval for the blizzard. And I also learned that the actual measurements, what we hear, you know, L.A. had 81 inches of snow and stuff like that during the November storm. National Weather measures it differently. The full measure of the November storm was only 59 some inches, the official measurement, which I can tell you, we had 82 inches in my house. So somebody needs to learn how to measure. But county's doing a great job on that. Buffalo was at the meeting and looking to work to develop better systems for Buffalo.
Well, it's really just a spectacular piece of work by everybody involved. No one would wish this on any organization, and certainly not our college. But the fact that it happened, it almost is a model for us going forward. How we can work together, how we can really unify and look at what the students need, what the college needs, and identify how we can help with that individually, collectively. It's, couldn't be a better object lesson for that. And, you know, going forward, our challenges here have been well documented. We deal with them every board meeting and in-between board meetings. And a lot of them are documented in today's materials. But what a tremendous example this is. And I just want, you know, I've heard so many names, Anthony, Mark, Andy, who I saw with Bob Tramoni over in the room with literally Post-it notes trying to figure out on a huge wall, who could go where, when, and be accommodated without disruption. And it was just a remarkable thing. Gail, Rich, Joe, Bob, I mean, but I think everyone sitting around the edge of this room, and everyone probably least at the table, had a hand in dealing with this. And I just, you know, from the trustees, just want to thank you, everyone on the edge of this room. The number of phone calls with Adyem, and of course, Adyem goes, must be noted, your leadership here, this dropped like a bomb out of the blue in the holidays, and the entire semester was at risk. And this was an extraordinary piece of leadership on your part and response from your entire team and the whole college community. So the trustees thank everyone involved. And I'm sure I speak for the students, because from what we have been able to understand, it was about as seamless for them as it could be, without having to move them to a different campus, a whole different geography. Remarkable challenge, remarkable response, and thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else have, around the room have questions or something to add to the discussion about the, either the blizzards or the North City Campus situation?
I just have one thing that stood out, was like your focus on the safety of students and making sure that there was someone at Oak and North Division?
South Division.
South Division. I just think that that's huge. And, you know, you can't say, "Oh, this is more important than this, and this is more important than this", but just like that piece, I know that there was a thousand things to do, and you could have been in so many different places, but the first thing you thought about was your, it's like your kids. It's like, the safety of my students, the bus passes, like just that high level of sensitivity toward students was just, I mean, everything is amazing, don't get me wrong. But my baby was out there, and I have a couple of college students. I want to make sure that they can get across the street.
And we're working on that. That is something that I know Mark and others who help in the community, the county exact as well as the mayor. There were other politicians in the area too that we're working with, because I think that is something, it's, it was my understanding that there's a lot issue with that, you know, it has been. And so I think we owe it to our students and certainly to our community in general to make sure what are some of the things that we could do to make sure that that area is a lot safer than what it is right now. So we will be doing that. We ask our faculty to make announcements to the students to just, especially as it relates to our cell phones. All of us are guilty of it, walking with our cellphone and not thinking and not paying attention to sometimes, especially that. And it's real quick, so we will be on that. I think it's important that we stay on that, because that needs to look different for our students, but for the entire community, quite honestly.
For those who might not be aware of the, just the more mundane aspect of this, the financial piece, this is a costly repair and reconstruction of our building. But my latest understanding, and I think the boards, is that this is covered by our insurance that's in place, with the exception of our deductible, which is, I believe, $25,000. And there is still at least a hope, subject to the comment about whether And there is still at least a hope, subject to the comment about whether FEMA, Mark's comment about whether FEMA will get approving approving this storm, that maybe even that twenty-five could be covered out of FEMA. So is anything changed in that understanding?
Not in my understanding, but Arda is going to be taking the lead with Paul Daniel to get that, and we're we're on it.
Currently, no. Just the deductible is as claimed. We believe that majority of the cost will be absorbed by our insurance, but that is still being determined.
And then as far as the impact and timing, my understanding again is this is not measured in days or weeks, but rather probably months where we're fixing city. And we're going to have to stay under these arrangements that you've made for essentially the semester. Is anything different than that?
No. We did meet with the president of the SERPRO, and he did give us a rough sort of phases, and one of them being to make sure that we're done, you know, in terms of going in, because that will delay in in terms of what they need to do. So we'll get more update, and that's what we'll bring to to the board to give you that. But the way it looks right now, certainly we're not going to be able to go in the middle of the semester.
And that that means a lot for, I mean, the students, obviously, we've talked a lot about that. But Colleen, you're here, and from the Senate's point of view and the faculty's point of view, first of all, we appreciate, you know, the the response to this disruption. Are there any particular concerns that that you or your colleagues have that we should be talking about now about this?
You know, the semester just began, so, you know, we're trying to accommodate our students as as much as possible, make sure, again, everything is seamless and that they're supported in every way. And I know we had to, we had to close Oak a little bit per one of the days a little bit. There was a, I think a Bunsen burner that set off like a CO2 alarm or something. It was very minor, but it's like, you know, little things that pop up because you're used to being in one space, and now we're in a new space, and everybody's learning to, you know, work in the new space. And it was, I think, like ten whole minutes, you know, of a disruption, and it's.
It was, it was actually, Rich made the call to do that. It was it was something that I I think we needed to do as a way of practice, right? The drill is important, too. This is the first time that we had, working, you know, roughly, we're about talking about a thousand, twelve hundred students plus another fifty, fifty-one or so faculty, and then on top of that, another, you know, forty or fifty staff. That's a lot of folks to be in those two buildings, especially the Oak. So that taking place also was really important. It was around one, one thirty or so.
Yeah, like a minute or two.
Yep, yep. So it was a good way to also get that idea of something happens, how do we exit house safely?
Right. And then learn how to move a science lab.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
To a a smaller, you know, space in a classroom and, you know, and still carry on and make sure that our students' learning goals are met. So, you know, we are, we had our faculty caucus of the Senate on Tuesday, made sure we were discussing communication points and things that faculty are concerned with, you know, moving forward through the semester. And we have our College Senate Executive Team meeting. Kathy and Adiam will be there on Tuesday, and we'll make sure we go through all those things to make sure that everybody's needs are met and most importantly, our student needs are met moving forward. So it's.
Appreciate it. And headed from the administrative side, administrative side, any concerns or comments to make?
No, I just think it was, you know, again, it was just a lot of shelves being moved quickly and trying to figure out where people were going to land.
Post-it notes.
Yeah, yeah. So I I think that, you know, in light of everything that had happened and how people were rearranged quickly, again, to Colleen's point, I think, as we start to work in the space, maybe different arrangements, excuse me, different arrangements will have to be made as we're working in the space more.
Okay. Well, I'm sure it's an evolving thing, right, as you get used to it and everyone, but if we keep the spirit of collaboration and teamwork, I think we'll be okay to get there. All right. I think since we have a quorum, may I ask our secretary trustee Phillips to call the roll and establish that we have a quorum?
Okay. Melody Baker?
Here.
Len Monahan?
Here.
Amanda Lo, absent. Candace Morrison?
Here.
Carrie Phillips, here. Jeffrey Stone?
Here.
Denise Wilson, here. Marcel Suarez-Pinero is absent.
Right. And as far as our absences, I believe Marcel was ill this week, and Amanda let me know last night via text that she had a personal matter come up in her family that made it impossible for her to attend, even though she had intended to. So we have a quorum in place, and thank you. I'm glad everyone could make it here. So I guess with that, I'll declare the meeting officially open at nine forty-one, having spent the first part of the meeting talking about the storm and receiving that on an informational basis. So let's, we can make our way through some business now with our quorum. We have, the consent agenda is the Board of Trustees, two meeting minutes. December fifteenth, our last full meeting, regular meeting. And then we had a special meeting on the nineteenth. And I've reviewed those minutes on page five and eleven and found them to be fine as far as I was concerned. Are there any comments or revisions to the sets of minutes? If not, may I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Subook.
All right, thank you, Mel. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Received outside committee meetings, this is an important item, item Roman three, one on our agenda. Here we have ASME, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, right? So we have a situation here that needs a little explaining because there's a significant financial impact here, but it's important. There is an executive summary on page fourteen to which I refer everyone. But broadly speaking, what is happening here is that there was an arrangement and an agreement between the county and ASME for pay raises and revised work arrangements and so forth, the typical contractual arrangement. But ECC, because of the situation we were in financially with the pandemic and the significance, enrollment dropping off with the pandemic and so forth, was carved out for one year. But the ripple effect of doing that was meaning that we were losing good people who were working here but had the ability to transfer rather painlessly within Erie County to other county units and earn more money, significantly more money. And so while we appreciated not having to make that adjustment in a very tough budget year, it has an effect now that we have to deal with. So what, as I understand it, the the arrangement here is that we will be joining the contractual arrangements that were negotiated for the county as a whole, but retroactive only to September first, the beginning of this fiscal year. In other words, we will not have an increase for which we did not budget or plan last year. But this year we will, and my understanding is we have evaluated that and feel it's critical that we not continue to lose employees simply because of this differential. And while you never like to spend money when you are challenged financially as we are, this is an important spend. So that's my take, but I invite Adiam or or you're designated to explain it further or correct anything I said.
Sure. Bill, do you want to speak to it, and then I'll add?
George, good morning, trustee. And Jeff, you probably said everything that you said, but I will provide a little more context. As the the agreement, we are part of the county, we're considered a joint employer towards OSCE, SCAM, through the library in Erie County. They negotiated in good faith last year and and agreed on multi-year treaty that's with retroactive to January first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty, twenty twenty-six. Part of the agreement with ASME was that there was a carve-out for ECC employees for wage and hourly rate increases, and there was a language in the kind of agreement that was struck that we would enter, re- pre-engage in negotiations prior to the beginning of twenty twenty-three. So Officer in Charge, Segai, HR Director Cynthia Buckley, Josh Panel from Erie County Director of Public Relations, and I met several times with ASME, and all negotiations are a lot of give and take. But at the end of the day, and to Jeff's point, they wanted to go retroactive all the way. The agreement that we struck was that we'd go retroactive to September first, the beginning of our fiscal year. So when we started looking at the cost prior to the negotiations, spring of twenty-two, we, full-time employee, when we coughed up this proposal, we were down to fifty-nine full-time ASME employees, so a significant reduction. Our bi-weekly spend for ASME employees went from two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand on average down to a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars on average. And it's it's struck a toll on our, the human capital of our ASME employee. They are decimated, staffing, and had a very difficult time.
I could continue. So I think, as we all know, especially with the storm, that's when we really were challenged in not having enough staff to really deal with that, right? We had folks at the campus three, three days in a row straight because we didn't have the ability to to staff appropriately. And there's other issues in terms of student experience and not having enough individuals to make sure to maintain the campuses appropriately. So those things have been real issues for us that are impacting not only our students but the safety and the operation of the college. Bill, you back?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I, was I lost for a moment?
Yeah.
It's it's Boise, Idaho. I don't know what's going on. But yes, the human capital, as I I even said, that was the most dramatic example. We could not even get staff to plow our driveways and and parking lots and keep the sidewalks open for our students. So this is, I think, a fair proposal. It will allow our staff that may be county to possibly come back through and transfer. They will be brought salary and wage-wise up to what they would be making in the county. So I, we're hopeful that we'll get some transfers back. And the learning curve for our former employees coming back is basically nil. So that's a good thing. And, you know, those employees that come back are employees that we want to have, and they are employees that want to come back. So we're we're asking the Board to approve the resolution that will incorporate the salary and wage components of the previously approved agreement between the Joint Employer County and ASME. And we do have the financial savings on the salary and fringe benefit line to on this. Our incremental cost at twenty-three will go up on a percent basis based upon the living that was negotiated by the county. That's three and a half percent in twenty-four and two and a half percent twenty-five and twenty-six. And I am certainly hoping, any questions? I think this this is fair. Our ASME employees are the lowest hourly hourly wage employees in our, all our employees.
Thank you, Bill. Adiam, I I believe it is the recommendation of you and as Officer in Charge and the entire senior executive staff that this is an important thing, but valid?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Critical, yes. We've talked about it at budget as well and in other venues, but it's now before the Board to take a formal action to approve this.
I'll move it.
Okay. What what you're moving is the resolution on page sixteen of our materials, which essentially resolves, that recites the history that we have here and brings us into this agreement retroactive to September first, twenty twenty-two for our ECC employees and empowers the Officer in Charge to implement. A second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we have that adopted, and I hope that that leads to less of a drain on our human, our employees. This has been very difficult. You throw a storm on top of it or an entire college relocation, and, you know, it's it's reason you have people employed. So we've got to make sure we're good, and I think we have. Thank you for that. Now, you mentioned this during your report, Adiam, but our culinary facilities, when we had to move, one of the biggest challenges, in addition to, say, the library and some of the administrative space, technology, was culinary. And this item three, Roman three, sub-two, is an agreement very creative over with the Byzons. So I'll let you explain.
I'll let Kristin talk to it, and I know Juan is there to support it, too. You want to talk about that because that was a big thing that you did to move our students to that?
Sure. We had to decide very quickly where to put our students because the challenge for our labs and our students is that the time of the class is seven thirty a.m. So our shuttle does not start until after eight. So busing students to North Campus to use their facilities presented two problems. There wasn't enough room to put our cohorts into the existing North Culinary Students, and the bus, they just couldn't get here to start the class on time. So we threw a collaboration, I'm on the National Restaurant Association Board, I'm an educational board director for several years now, and I had the pleasure of serving with Rob Free, who's the Director of Operations over at the Byzons in their food service, and Sean Reagan, and they're close friends, and I did an SOS. I helped out, and I said, can we, can we use your kitchens? You're not using them now, the baseball, you know, season has not started. And he brought it to his team, and they very graciously met with us. We had all the top team, we had Bill Ruder, we had Paul Daniel, we had Dr. Segai, we had our Dean, Ma Martinez, all on the call, and they very graciously said, we're going to be good neighbors, and we welcome the kids to come to our facilities. We have had great response from our students. They are so excited. Our attendance is up, believe it or not. They are trying to put their best foot forward, and it is something that has been long overdue. These gentlemen over at the Byzons keep saying, could you send your culinary kits to us? We need, we need individuals to employ. And so now our students are in their kitchens, and they have exposure to this operation early on in their culinary career. So it is a great collaboration, and we're really lucky. They have some dates that they may ask us to go online remotely, which we're set up to do. So we don't anticipate that. We actually offered our students to work the dates, and they love that because that was free labor, actually, so they could train the students and show them what a real operation in in busy season looks like. So we're hoping, we're taking it five weeks at a time. So our labs run in five-week modules. So we're in the first five weeks, and our last five weeks is baking and pastry. So that will present a little bit of a challenge, but we're hoping through just bringing equipment, which we've all moved out of the building, security probably wants to to kill us because we keep going in and out of the building, but we're we're getting all our equipment. So we have induction burners, and they have special pans, and all these things that we've collected through thirty years at the city, we've we've just actually transported over to their location. And they've been very generous with their storage space that we're storing all our equipment over there. And the the students are cooking on the stoves and induction burners, and they're, we're making it work.
Excellent.
Do you think it'll be, once the baseball season starts, will this be a generation that can continue till the end of our semester?
Rob Free indicated that that is possible, yes. Yes.
Wow, very creative. You used the term good neighbors, the city of good neighbors. We all hear that.
Reap and charge. They did not.
Reap and charge. That's fantastic.
Let's look for an opportunity, you know, let's look for something.
We should buy the dishes and games.
I'd like to do a little something for the Byzons. To be determined. We'll leave that in the good hands of our our leaders.
And the only other program that may be going out for colleges, Building Management, and they're working with under Andy Sacco, and they're doing instruction the first few weeks of the semester, and then they're going to be partnering, which we already have a partner, but longer partner with Buffalo, Habitat for Humanity, so that those students will have actual experience, again, difficulty of moving all those equipments. So it's a, it's a really a nice way for our students to get hands-on experience with real opportunities.
This is a great, another great example of workforce collaboration as well, and like they were literally our neighbors. So, I mean, it only, it only makes sense that that was able to happen. In the news, I see things being presented about the college, but this is the type of stuff that we should be highlighting. And you said ECC should do something for the Byzons. This is one of the things that we can do for the Byzons, is highlighting their openness and their partnership with the college and being able to provide a service for our students to not interrupt their learning and potentially, one day after, you know, tell them, let them wait till they graduate, don't scoop them too fast. But can be employed right, right there in our, in our hometown, in our backyard, and I think that's really. And I think that's really, really important. And I also think, you know, I'm always thinking about a competitive edge against our, our other colleges. This is a, this is a way that we showcase our culinary program to our students and can potentially use as a recruitment tool. So hopefully, this goes past the, the storm, the closure of, the closure of the polls. And this is something that we can continue to do. So thank you again, Dr. Sagai, and for your leadership and being able, being, having the relationship already that you could build upon. I think that's really what's important with a lot of these workforce collaborations. So thank you for that.
You know, it's a really good point for, after the storm happened and the building was shut down, my worry was that we have a lot of press coverage of that, and that would discourage students or deter them from enrolling or have them, you know, dropped. I've moved past that now a little bit, to the point where I'm seeing the positive. But I'm not sure, you know, I think I'd rather leave that for Adyem and Mike to think about, you know, where are we in terms of the reaction to this in the public? I have still not seen the big article about, you know, ECC loses city campus. We have not lost city campus. We have, we have reimagined city campuses, you know.
One of the buildings is in repair.
And we're not abandoning the post office, of course, you know. So that's, that's happening. But there's a story there, and this culinary is just a little microcosm of the whole story. And this heroic effort that the whole team made, you know, I think is, now I'm not so afraid of a story as I am more looking forward to it. But I do want to make sure that we, that comes out in the right way so that students aren't discouraged or that, you know, and I'm not sure of the right balance or the timing of that. But I just want, I think Denise's point about the positive here is very important to have in mind, you and Mike especially.
And that's why the event this morning, our culinary students were here. And that's all their goodies over there. I told Kelly a little bit late yesterday before she ordered, but I think that's one of the things that we want to do is constantly highlight. It's our story, right? We could tell our story. And I think if we present it, I think with the social media or otherwise, we'll be able to do that. But that was the significance of those students today.
Now, this is, the material relating to this partnership with the Byzons is not in the notebook. It's here in front of us in a loose form, where there's an executive summary. But I don't know if there's a resolution that you want us to adopt today, or do we just give a general approval of the concept?
I believe a general approval. Correct, Bill?
Yeah.
All right. And have, have we entered into a contract with the Byzons, or is that to come? Or is there no contract, just an informal?
Paul, can you, is working on that job? And this is just like a clinical, it's particularly affiliated with
We, we should have something memorializing the arrangement, right?
Contract is completed. As soon as the Board approves of it, it'll be executed.
All right.
It's been approved by both parties. County Attorney reviewed it. We got it cleared through them. We presented it to the Byzons, they did center back the red line version, very minimal changes. So it's, as soon as the Board approves it, we're going to get it executed.
So we, we don't have that contract now, but we will approve the general concept, and then next week, next month, we can ratify the contract? Is that?
We have it. Kelly's just mentioned that we received it yesterday.
Oh, did we? Okay.
It came in like yesterday morning.
Are there any concerns that anyone has about it, that, that the college leadership?
Absolutely not. No, because, excuse me, we wanted to start, and they are in the, in the facility. So we need that to be signed.
Okay. Well, then I think we should go ahead and take a little leap here and approve this contract. Even though it hasn't been widely circulated yet, it's in front of us, and it's been blessed by the county, or the college leadership and county attorney.
I'll move it. Just a thought, though, as we move it. I think it'd be good from a marketing perspective, maybe Mike will weigh in on this, that we announce the Bison ECC collaboration first, and then the after effect would be, this is a result of a storm, water main, and the college had to move its facilities. So it's a positive, you know, isn't this great? The kids are getting a chance to work with the Byzons. They might get a job out of this. And the Byzons were so, you know, complimentary and helpful and working with us on this. I think it's a great story. And then, yeah, this is a result because of the pipes burst during the storm and, you know, whatever.
Mike, do you see it that way? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I do. I think, you know, we would just not, we want to make sure we reach out to the Byzons first to make sure they're comfortable. Do they want this publicity? They probably do, but I don't know if they want this. So I, but I think that will be the first step. But then certainly, absolutely, it's a wonderful, feel-good story. And I see this as an extension, albeit an accidental one, of something that we've been deliberately doing now for some time, the partnership with ECMC, the partnership with Westher. You know, these are great things to highlight because these students are learning, as Kristen was shared, on, on the job, onsite, using their, their facilities, you know, getting used to their systems, et cetera, et cetera. And so they're not only being trained in their general career, but they're getting the nuances that are so valuable and so costly for those employers to train for these people coming right out of school. So that they're not just becoming a nurse, they're becoming an ECMC nurse. And that, that's incredible value. And that's something that is replicable across many industries.
Basic skills. I would pick up on what you both said and say, when this article comes out, if it does, you know, and I think it should, I have some paragraphs in there about previous arrangements like this, the Westher, the ECMC nursing arrangement, to remind the public. I know an article came out on those, but every time we can reiterate that, I think it's good. It gives us an opportunity to do that.
I also think it's a lesson to the students on leveraging existing resources and businesses to build capacity, to partnership building, using these networks to create the relationships to get the job done. I think that's huge.
So there's a motion on the table to approve, in the form presented and recommended by college leadership, the, the collaboration agreement between the Byzons and the college for culinary during our displacement. A second?
Second.
Second. But we're also for the ASCME, right? Are we doing that at the same time?
We already did that.
We did the ASCME, yes.
Oh, we did. Okay, sorry.
I meant to do them separately, because they're both pretty significant things. So any further discussion on the collaboration with the Byzons? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We approve that with enthusiasm. Thank you. We've got our items received outside committee meetings in front of us here covered. And we will go now to committee briefings and start, please, with Denise's curriculum, student success, and diversity. You've got quite a litany of things there.
We have a lot, yes. Do you mind? So we met, and we thoroughly discussed each and every one of these items and also had some, some great conversation just regarding other topics that will be presented to the Board soon. But I asked Erickson to be here. Dr. Sagai was unable to make that meeting. I mean, there was a storm. I think there was something else that kept her busy. I don't know what it was. But, but we did have the meeting. And if we can go through and vote separately or after Erickson runs through them all?
I think we can vote on all of these collectively at the end, if, once they're explained.
Perfect.
Because they were pretty straightforward.
Yeah, okay.
Great. So I'll go through them in order, and if there are any details, Dr. Sagai or others can, yeah, chime in as well. This first one is within the Health Sciences. I'm not sure, Dr. Connor, if you wanted me to articulate?
So we have two agreements that are in front of the Board. The first is the VA. VA, of course, everyone knows, is for federal, federal funds. The contract is for ten years. So you will see on the page, it is for an affiliation agreement. So our clinical students can go there. Jim Beryl is the head of respiratory care. He has done an incredible job. And this is exclusively for the Health Science Department of Respiratory Care. So I ask your permission that you would approve it. The second is for KALIDA. KALIDA is different. It's, it's a local funding as well as local patient base as opposed to a federal funding and a federal funding base. It is for a clinical lab, I misspoke. It's clinical lab, I believe, nursing as well, correct, KALIDA? And it is also medical assisting. It is a two-year program for affiliation. It is done through their educational coordinator. You will see on the contract, the indemnification is there as well as two years if you approve today. And then every year thereafter, it has to be a written agreement by both parties.
Karen, I see KALIDA there. What was the, the first one you mentioned? I just want to make sure it's on the list.
VA. Somebody put the executive summary and combined it.
I see. Okay, they're combined into item one on our list.
No?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
The second, I'd like to take an opportunity to highlight the academic and faculty-driven initiative related to this. Professor Kozlowski and Professor Scaglion in criminal justice were unable to attend. But I really wanted to highlight their contribution to this because it was where, on their own autonomy, they had presented about the criminal justice program to our partners through BOCES. And in the presentation, took the opportunity to evaluate the curriculum and the articulation agreement that we currently have with BOCES. And they identified that there's a really strong opportunity for students to come out of the BOCES program with an increased number of credits that would then specifically transfer to our criminal justice program. So Professor Kozlowski and Professor Scaglion brought that to my attention, and very much my view was, let's empower them to be able to figure out how then we can update this articulation agreement. And we went through the processes there. So what you see in front of you then is this updated and revised articulation agreement between our institution and BOCES specifically for the criminal justice program. And again, I got to give all the accolades then to Professor Kozlowski, Professor Scaglion, and the Criminal Justice Department for really taking the lead on this.
So here's another example of faculty stepping up and thinking outside the box, thinking innovatively, and creating opportunities for the, for the college and our students as a whole. And so I just wanted to take just a little bit of time to congratulate them and thank them for, for that work, so.
I agree. The next one is within our Pathways Program. This is an addendum to our contract with Buffalo Public School as they are going through some review and audit through their processes. This is with regards to their funding model that they use. It does not affect us as an institution in regards to this, but it does allow for Buffalo Public to be able to amend the way that they then are funded through their non-credit program. So because we have a contract with them, the request was to then add this addendum to our contract with them. The next one is a renewal of our CAST contract. So this is then signing it in continuation. What's also been identified, and I shared this with Trustee Wilson as well, is that there are two additional incentives to sign for it that'll happen through this calendar here. It'll show up as two additional revenue in our, our budgets, though. So one would be in the next month of twenty-five thousand, and then the next one would be December of twenty-three for twenty-five thousand in addition to what we had previously. So in terms of our budget, it would show up for this year, one of them, one for next year.
So I just want to just bring the Board a little back to this conversation. If you remember, the CAST program is one of the initiatives where we are, the cost outweighs what we're receiving from the county. And our former president began to have some conversation about that being a problem. Fortunately, there was not an increase to the, the amount that has been given to us historically to really cover our costs. But this bought my additional incentive. And I'm not, I can't say for a fact, but this being introduced this year could have something to do with that. I'm not sure for a fact, but, I mean, it's better than nothing.
Excuse me, this, this is the one, if I'm remembering right, this is the one where we had a discussion about nine months or a year ago, and we said, we haven't seen a change in that reimbursement or that fee in, in, since two thousand and three or something, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
And we made a big thing of it. And it was to be investigated. There was a little uncertainty whether it really stood budge, or, you know, the county supports us in so many ways, et cetera. But I'm glad you mentioned that, because when I read it, I thought, I wonder if that's the same one from a year ago.
Yes, yes. So as we continue, yes, so yes, as we continue to look into our, our programs and our, the different initiatives we have, and look at the actual cost of them, and reevaluate some of these contracts and partnerships, this is just one example of us doing that. But I know between Erickson and Adyem's team, they have been doing this ongoing now and to see where we are. Just for Board's information, it is required by contract that if we have, if you have a grant, if we receive a grant, and employ a staff person, even after the grant dollars end, we still have to cover the cost of keeping that staff person in some capacity. And that, that may have been okay at a point in time where we were booming with funds and students and everything else. But right now, it presents such a hardship for the college to cover some of those, those costs. So we are, that's why we started to look at the, the contracts and kind of dive into them to get a true cost of what the different things that we're doing.
Yeah, I think the thing to do is to, we should approve this, but, but we should ask and, and request that, that some combination of Adyem, our Officer in Charge, Bill, Erickson, whoever touches this elephant, you know, continue to see if there is a way to boost that, that reimbursement or that, or income from this. Because it just had gone so long without adjustment. And it's the type of thing that if we don't focus on it, it'll just drift along for another five or ten years, and it'll still be the same. Now, I, that being said, the county's support has been fantastic in so many areas. The retirement incentive, the extra million last year on MOE, other things, all the time capital. So this isn't a hill to die on with the county, but it's, it's something that we should advocate for.
Absolutely. The next one, I'm not sure if, if Joe or Kathy would want to provide any additional detail. This is then allowing us to participate in the NC SARAH. Sarah?
Yeah, I can, I can give that. So NC SARAH is for our online classes. It gives us our online degrees reciprocity in other states. We do this every year. It is required.
And then lastly, I may ask Colleen Reedy if we want to then talk about the workforce development.
I can tell you that this request came in from Buffalo Sewer Authority, and the workforce development area has a longstanding relationship with Buffalo Sewer. And they're requesting Rexel to do this specific training, and it's instrumentation technician training.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of the six, really seven, when you combine one, it covers both VA and KALIDA items? If not, then I'll take a motion, please, to approve as presented all, all of these items listed under item four, A, one, two, three, four, five, and six, and summarized in our materials.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? No? All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? No. Okay. A unanimous vote in favor of approving those arrangements and contracts? So one through six, Denise, we're still with you? And then we've got some informational items?
Just a few informational items. We have, of course, the minutes. And if, just briefly about the...
Correct. So each year, if there's continued relationships with our advanced studies, again, this is more for the Board's awareness and for information. So what this does is then allow us to continue our articulation agreement with two entities, Rochester City School and Childcare Resource Network, with the two programs that are identified here.
Eric, why, why does that contract fall outside of Board approval and the others are inside Board approval?
This is already a established articulation agreement, and so this is a continuation then for these. And it seems that that's been the prior, previous practice. As long as it's not something new, otherwise it'd be for your awareness.
Okay. Denise, and then your minutes, right? You've got the minutes?
Yes, oh, and then the minutes. Yep, we're all set. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So, and again, open invite to hit those pastries. They're delicious.
Also open invite to join the Curriculum and Student Success Committee in the Board meetings.
And thanks to all who reported on, on those six items. Appreciate that. For budget, we had a very good and robust meeting on January twelfth. And I appreciate in particular Arda putting together a lovely and very helpful financial report about the state of the college that we will hear in greater detail in a minute. But that went before the Budget Committee, and we had a great opportunity to ask a lot of questions and appreciate that work that was done. So again, that's really valuable work, Arda, and we'll see more about that in a second. In terms of what happened at that meeting, you'll see items one through four were, had to do with ASC. I don't know if Susan is on it, is Susan? I don't know if Susan is on it, is Susan in the mix somewhere? I don't think so. But I can report that Carl Widmer from Lumsden and McCormick reported quite extensively on ASC, his accountant letter, his findings, his assumptions, all those things were at the budget committee. And I would say that the main takeaway from that was that ASC experienced a big dip in 2020 and 2021 because of the pandemic. And we had, you know, less bookstore, we had less childcare, we had less food, and less vending, everything that they manage. But it did tick up last year, the year concluded August 2022. And of course, the whole situation was boosted quite effectively by a PPP, two PPP loans that were made to ASC and then forgiven, in keeping with what happened society-wide. So those totaled, there was quite a substantial total, I think it was 147 and 344, almost half a million dollars that, you know, kept ASC functioning through the pandemic. Now, that money will not be there again, but we're seeing at least a little more normalcy in the way that operates. Now, it remains to be seen what effect the city situation will have on ASC and its revenues, but that's going to be part of this year's story. So that was a good report. I didn't note, unless anyone else on the budget committee noted something about ASC, we talked about it and accepted it and saw that it was coming back, but still, we know that bookstore revenue is quite down because everyone's going electronic now and the bigger commissions are on paper books, which people aren't buying as much. So ADAM, is there anything about ASC that you'd like to add in the absence of Susan?
Absolutely. Particularly as it relates to the city campus, they have been extraordinary in really accommodating, including the bookstore, right? That's a big piece for us to make sure that our students, so we have a system with our facility where books are being ordered at North or delivered at North and then brought to the city campus and appropriately distributes, as well as the food service, that they really also stepped up and they are delivering hot goods from this campus and deliver it to the city campus to make sure that they're doing, those students are being served that way. They care as well, so they've been on this with us the entire time. We are going to meet with Sue regularly to really even talk about the entire college to make sure that we're listening to our students, servicing them in the way that they want to be served, making sure things are accessible for them. So we'll have an ongoing collaboration with Sue and her team to make sure things are smooth.
All right. So that, I think, takes care of ASC. Keep in mind, we get this type of thing for ASC, we get it for the foundation, and we get it for the college. So there's three times when the accountants come in and present us with their elaborate work product and their opinion letters and so forth. And this one was for ASC. Facility rentals and waivers, I did not see anything extraordinary on that list, but all trustees are welcome to read that and question anything on it. Supplier reports, same thing. Budget to actual, that's always a good piece of paper to review, especially its footnotes, where I've complimented Artis' work in the past, where she helps us to see exactly what is behind some of the numbers. Appreciate that. And Bill did the same thing when he was giving those to us. But that will be covered when we talk about the report that Artis is going to deliver. Bill? It's a terrible cloud. So I'll skip that for now and kind of land it on.
Denise is getting a picture of that.
It's better than the cat.
I'm sorry, I had to. I'm sending this to him right now.
A little contest to identify what that is. LMHF, Labor Management Health, is looking still in the positive. I always look at that to see, we heard a report last month on that from Lolly, and it's running positively, so as far as I'm concerned, that's good. And I don't dig too far down into that, but we did have a good report last month where the person who runs that came in and addressed some of our questions, and we'll keep an eye on that. But month to month, it's just generally a report we receive and know. Then, take a look at 11 and 12. These are really interesting items. SUNY, 11 says SUNY 2023-24, this is on page 100, operating and capital budget request submission. So this has nothing to do with your community college directly, but what it is, is SUNY writing essentially to the governor and the budget office saying, here's what's going on in the SUNY system as a whole, and here's what we need and want to request from you in the budget. So that gives a very, very interesting insight into what's going on system-wide in New York State in SUNY, what the funding has been in the past, what the challenges are, what's happening with enrollment, not just here, but all over the whole state, and what they're worried about. And broadly speaking, they're worried about infrastructure because SUNY owns an enormous array of buildings, facilities, and sites. They all need attention. They're worried about inflation, and they're worried about salaries because about 70% of SUNY's operating expenses, like ours, go in the form of salaries. So they are looking for support. They found some support last year in the governor's budget. There was support for teaching salaries, and Artis is going to touch a little bit on that. But that's a good read when you separate yourself from what's going on in SUNY Erie, but what's happening broadly, because we will then feel the ripple effects of that. So 11 is really a good, interesting thing to read, page 100. And then, the other thing that's a little more, you know, concerning or challenging to read, it's a difficult read, is item 12. Erie County Fiscal Stability Authority Report on SUNY Erie and our budget and our overall outlook for the next five years. Every trustee should carefully read that document, and everyone in this room should carefully read that document. I do not wish to say that the ECFSA is the final word on anything about the college, but they are due respect because they're a formal organization that is affiliated with Erie County. They were established, Len, you'll painfully remember why they came into existence when you were in the legislature.
They were the control board.
They are the control board in the county. And while they're in a passive state right now, not in active management role, they are still a voice to which we need to be listening and responding to. So what that really outlines though is they take a look not just at this year or last year, but they look about five years ahead. And while I don't agree with everything that's in that report, it spells out our financial challenge. We know, as in Mr. Ruder has, you know, repeatedly reminded us and others about the fact that our financial situation has been masked to some extent, to quite a large extent, by the infusion of about $24 million in federal aid during the course of the pandemic. Now, yes, that money came in, but we also had serious problems that were triggered by the pandemic, right? So it's not as if we just got a free $24 million. We really suffered to get that money. So where the balance is, the fact is though that that money is not coming anytime soon. Yes, we do have the infrastructure bill, and we have the Inflation Reduction Act, which we're looking to see where, if anywhere, that might find some money. The state has an activist governor who has seriously talked about the SUNY system and its challenges and desired to reimagine SUNY for 2030, to empower students, enable students to succeed. So those are good signs. But the challenges that were noted in the facilities report that we had, that college leadership has talked about now for several years are very real, and they are handily summarized here. Again, without agreeing with every line in that, that's an important read for everyone who cares about SUNY Erie, because we all have to work together to deal with those challenges. And just like we did the city campus closing, there's got to be a unified response, or if we don't do it, someone's going to do it for us. And that could be the county or the state, and they'll just say, this is not a sustainable operation, and you are going to have to respond to our demands. And I'd rather we manage the situation than they. So that's, you know, an editorial comment by me, but I found myself reading and rereading the ES, ECFSA report. We'll note it, but that's something to take and internalize. As far as, and I'll offer a chance to have comments and questions before Artis reports, but as far as the personnel transaction report, I did not note anything of significance, you know, that jumped off the page at me there. But always, again, like, we're always able to look at that and bring it up at a board meeting. So before we go to ARDA, does anyone want to respond or react to what I just finished saying on any of those items? If not, then ARDA, I don't know if you want to present this on screen, or should we look in hard copy as you talk to us?
I don't know if Bob can present it from the agenda? Maybe I should have asked him earlier.
In your materials, we're talking about item 14 on page 122. It's a slide deck.
I apologize, Bob. I should have told you earlier.
And this affects all of us, so.
And thank you, by the way, for covering all of that. You did a fabulous job. I honestly couldn't have said it better myself. So I always ask you, do me a favor. But I'm also very thankful because you are well informed, so you know where we stand, and you know you're going to inform the board and whomever needs to be informed of our situation.
Well, we've given good information, and if everyone reads it and pays attention to it, we're in good shape, but we do have to react to it as well.
Yes, absolutely. Oh, here it is. So basically, I prepared a presentation to kind of inform the group of where we stand, a little overview of three fiscal years, year '21, '22, which ended August 31st, our current year, '22, '23, and then the budget proposal that SUNY submitted, and what that actually means for community colleges. So this is fiscal year '21, '22. I'm just going to hold up my actual laptop because I'm pretty blind over there. So for year '21, '22, the year-end audit, it's still in review. Basically, what this slide represents, it's just a little highlight of where our reserve balance is at August 31st, which is at $14.6 million. Please note that this is still subject to audit, but it's pretty reasonable and in line with our projections that were made last April. I would also like to report that the budget surplus for '21, '22 is at $6.3 million. This is different than from our reserve balance. A major contributor towards this were strictly the federal stimulus funds, which we received in the amount of $12.9 million, which was a little bit higher than what was budgeted. But without that $12.9 million, we would be in a deficit of $6.3 million. And that's pretty much. But if you want to see more detail, like Chairman Stone, he suggested that you review the financial dashboard. We have a lot of data in there, and I do try, we try, well, my staff, my team actually is working on the financial dashboard as well, so they do add a lot of footnotes in there.
On the 14.6, keep in mind, our policy would drive about what Artis about 16.
Yes, ideally, yes.
That we should have under our policy. So we're still below what we should have by our own guidelines.
Correct.
And the Fiscal Stability Authority report projects, I mean, lest we think that the 14.6 is back and we're now good, they project us to be minus $5 million by the '25, '26 year at current pace and trends and without further adjustments.
Just keep in mind, the report that they provided also, when we prepared the year '22, '23, we had every single employee at the college, we didn't know about the layoffs and the impact that that's going to be driven. So those numbers are not set in stone, so from year to year, their report may fluctuate based on the decisions that we make as a unit here and how we impact the institution.
I would just though say that this is a recent report by them, so they had knowledge of the layoffs while they did it. So they complimented us on the steps that we had taken to try to bring the fiscal situation into control. But they still, even with knowledge of those steps, they are projecting a minus five in '25, '26. Still a way out, but I think they, and yes, these numbers change, and like I said, I don't agree with everything they've said, but it's just, we shouldn't say, oh, 14.6 and growing, things look great, right?
Yes, we're always going to be mindful. We do have a great team that's keeping an eye on all operations, in all honesty. The, this slide was provided at the time by Dr. Nielens to me, and which was shown to Dr. Segai and Bill Ruder. I know he's going to give an update on enrollment, but for '21, '22, we did see a decrease in enrollment of 10% in FDEs. And please keep in mind that enrollment still is continuing to decline, and I believe for fall, it's fall '22, our decline in enrollment is roughly 2%.
And we're down 44 since our peak in 2010, '11.
Correct, yes.
Forty-four percent.
Since when?
FDE, since our peak in 10, 10, '11. So a lot of that we've known about for years, but it's accelerated.
Yeah. I mean, that is a significant drop when you consider the inflation that we see every day. Next slide, this is fiscal year, this is our current fiscal year, '22, '23. And then in here, we, I do present that the payroll vacancy fund, which was established actually by Bill Ruder, and it's still going really well, it's being monitored in a much better way than it ever was, I believe, historically. So for '22, '23, we budgeted for 29 vacant positions at $1.5 million. This slide represents as of December 1st, we had 15 available positions, estimating at 981,000. But as of January 1st, George DeRosa did send us an updated list of vacancy control. I believe we have a little over 700,000 left that we could potentially fill with positions, and they remain as vacant. Salaries and benefits for the current year have certainly decreased significantly compared to previous years, and that is strictly due to layoffs and early retirements and people choosing to transition elsewhere. And that resulted in a decrease of $2.7 million as of November, that is 20%. And, and the, I'm sorry, and then 1.3 million in benefits. So early projections for savings in salaries and benefits for '22, '23 are at $18 million. These are, please note that these are very early projections. It doesn't mean that we're set in stone, and the fact that we actually have to backfill some positions from the August terminations that we've seen. But as of right now, we project $18 million in savings from salaries and benefits, and that generates roughly 18%, 18.22%.
I got a quick question regarding that, kind of linking this conversation to the presentation regarding our, the lack of staffing in our maintenance area? Facilities, sorry, facilities area? Would those fill-ins, the staff that's coming back, impact that vacancy control? Is that, is that where this?
100%. It'll affect the vacancy control and then also the surplus that we project currently. Any new hires will impact these numbers, so these are very early projections.
Okay. And so just in early conversations and some work that we're doing, I'm working with Cynthia Buckley regarding HR, looking at the, how the layoffs and things that happen within position transitions and things like that that happen. It may be required that, or necessary that we bring, not necessarily bring the same people back, but fill some of those positions, correct?
Yes.
So do you project that we have the dollars for, for that? I mean, we, yes, we did save money, but it seems like we saved money a little carelessly.
It's important to note that people are leaving the college weekly. So I think that, that balance will take place, I think, appropriately. We are doing, to Artis' point, really tracking that. But more importantly though, it's, the idea is not to just bring folks back, right? It really makes sense that where we are right now, right? We have to consider enrollment number, so the need is different, right? And different offices have very much a different need and different skill sets, so we have to be very diligent about how we're bringing back folks. So facility, we did that analysis and say, okay, what do we need and where do we need? Securities is another area, academics or enrollment. So we are very conscious of what it is that we're doing and how we're doing it, but at the same time, working with Artis and her team and Bill to make sure that what we're doing makes sense in terms of where we're going to land as far as the budget is concerned.
I just, I just want to make sure, because when I see, oh, we saved X amount, I think it was on the previous slide, but when we save X amount and due to early retirements, layoffs, and what have you, some of that, I mean, yes, that's good to save, but at the same time, it's still costly in our services, that save, okay.
And just because it's $18 million, remember, our budget was built on a $9 million deficit. Of that is a chunk that we did not even have the funds to operate sufficiently. Of that is a chunk that we did not even have the funds to operate sufficiently.
While the subject of cuts is on the table, reading from the Erie County thing, this Fiscal Stability Authority, this is a positive in the sense of what they're doing with us. And then keep in mind, this is a pretty conservative group, does it, you know, pretty fiscally conservative people over there. They note that we have indicated an organization that is currently very good at cost and budget cutting. I mention this because very often when I'm out or even talking to knowledgeable people about the county, the college, you'll get this, that, you know, that college can't continue to exist in its current form with this forty-four percent enrollment drop since two thousand ten. That is correct, but it implies that we've not done anything at all to even address that, and we have. Even in the Stability Report, it acknowledges that current college spending is ten point four percent lower than it was four years ago in an inflationary time, a significant accomplishment, given inflation over time. That's coming from the Control Board. However, the decrease in enrollment, particularly FTEs, has been steeper than college budget cuts over the same period. So no matter what we do, we're dealing with a relatively fixed infrastructure. And yes, we can reimagine that, we're gonna have to, but as long as we've got that, it's, it's hard to cut as fast as enrollment is dropping. And that's, that's the challenge that they're outlining for us, and that's our big problem that's sitting on this table.
Yes, and the team is definitely reviewing the programs and the space and constantly reevaluating and assessing. I couldn't be prouder, to be honest, with the team that we currently have. Okay, next slide. So on this slide is a continuation for twenty-two, twenty-three, and SUNY Erie will receive two point seven million dollars of twenty-two, twenty-three's New York State budget that was released. We haven't seen those funds yet and I'm hoping to see them shortly, but these funds will be used to support enrollment growth.
That's really important, because remember last spring at Budget Time, we said, what about that sixty million? And weren't we gonna see any of that? And you did not put anything in budget for that, right? Last spring?
No, this is not.
Because we was too speculative. And really, two point seven out of sixty was pretty good for SUNY Erie, I thought. So that's just, that closes that loop that we left open last spring in the budget.
Yes, but, and we also are expecting a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which will be contributed towards unrepresented minorities. I think Dr. Neelans is working with Title IV schools to apply this money towards. But just keep in mind that this is one time in nature. However, this will also not impact our operating budget. This fund, these funds will be tracked separately under sponsored grants, like a different entity. It will not have any effect on our operating budget. Additionally, we have applied for four hundred and ninety-three thousand in support from the FEMA for pool testing. And we may also, like Mark covered, receive reimbursement for costs that occurred during the recent storms. I'm glad to hear that they will be actually on board, because I did not know that they're coming to visit our facilities and to evaluate, just from working with them, honestly, they've been very responsive. They do assign an individual to help us with as far as claims and the necessary documents that have to go to them. And they often, not often, a lot of the times that I do see, they will extend the time and as far as storms or if they focus on pool testing, I know that they would extend it, you know, and just go back. Do you have more costs that we can reimburse you through FEMA? And I can, now with this storm that we have and the costs are still being assessed and we don't really know the extent of the damages one hundred percent, there will be room for reevaluating and see what we can get out of FEMA as well if then, in case the insurance company doesn't cover all damages. So SUNY Erie also submitted a request to use five hundred thousand of the American Rescue Plans, and this was to support the health and safety of our institutions. These funds were strictly came through the federal stimulus funds. We said we were gonna use five hundred thousand of it to do some work internally. We have submitted, we will also get a state match, another five hundred million dollars. So we'll have a hundred, a million dollars to contribute to our campus' health and safety. And that will be also tracked as a sponsored grant. It will not necessarily affect our operating budget.
Arda, do you, and Bill, do you think that money is fairly likely to hit?
Yes, that money is available, it's just a matter of really drawing these funds down.
Good.
And starting the work, which we have set up internal meetings to do a lot of work, whether it's to address the two point seven million dollars and the initiatives that we actually met yesterday and reviewed our attempt to how can we best utilize these funds. Same thing with the one million dollars, five hundred of ARP funds and then the state. That will be, a lot of it has to do with HVAC units and filters and making sure that our environment is clean. And that is totally my fault, I apologize. Okay, so this is the SUNY budget proposal for twenty-two, twenty-three. So basically, just from reviewing, you did a wonderful job covering their lengthy budget proposal, which I read and reread repeatedly and kind of just took bits and pieces off of it to just give a little overview of what SUNY is proposing to the governor that they need to kind of have that trickle effect on whether it's community colleges, four-year state schools and et cetera.
Keep in mind, folks, that the governor's executive budget this year will come out around February first. It's an election year, she has about two or three additional weeks, right, mine, to do that? And she will take that time, so early February, not January twelfth like it normally would.
So from this slide, their proposal, the SUNY's proposal, they are requesting a hundred and sixty-six million dollars and a hundred and thirteen for new salary agreements, it says in there, and then fifty-three million for inflation to support the potential costs of bargaining agreements across all SUNY entities. And to allow for institutions to maintain operations and without being affected, without making like hard decisions the way we have to. Because every time there's something happening, it's we address salaries and employment. And, and it would be nice if we actually did receive a portion. Last year, they did offer this fifty-three point two million dollars in twenty-two, twenty-three, and we didn't even qualify for it because SUNY said we need to downsize and our institution didn't even qualify for this grant. So Bill Ruder did indicate that, please keep in mind that the SUNY budget proposal really doesn't impact community colleges at a length that it should. It's more triggered to, towards four-year institutions and hospitals and and that's that. But in case we do qualify for a portion of this salary incentive, we would be receiving four hundred, roughly four hundred and thirty-two thousand for every one percent in salary levels, a total of one point three million dollars that we project we could potentially get. And then that's that from that slide, next slide. Don't you love my little characters? Oh my, I put this so fast, I'm like, oh, man. So on this slide, so on this slide, SUNY did request specifically the incremental funds for the full-time salaries to be, to be, so even though we didn't qualify, the institutions that did receive a lot of this, these salary increments that they're asking for, they're asking even to be included in year twenty-three, twenty-four. Even though we didn't qualify, we hope that maybe this year we will qualify. Additionally, sixty million dollars were provided in twenty-two, twenty-three to support SUNY's response to enrollment. And we qualified for two point seven million dollars and the one hundred and twenty-five thousand in addition to, towards the unrepresented minorities. So basically, they just said in their twenty-three, twenty-four budget proposal, the two point seven that we received, it was just extended to be used in twenty-three, twenty-four, not necessarily that these are new dollars to benefit us. The funding floor on their budget proposal, they're suggesting that it should remain the same as in twenty-two, twenty-three. However, this is uncertain at this point. I hope that the executive budget really considers that, because that impacts our state aid significantly. Because our enrollment is down at this point, it doesn't benefit community colleges to use the per FDE, the rate per FDE versus what we actually received in twenty-two, twenty-three or the year prior.
Arda, just to remind all of us, is the floor, is it at a hundred percent or ninety-eight?
It's a hundred percent of prior year approved state.
Yeah, they upped that in the pandemic, right?
Yeah, stating.
That is a hundred percent of prior year.
Correct.
Which is huge for us.
Yes, just from looking at it, it was roughly three point seven million dollars that it benefits us if they stay, if they keep the funding floor the same as last year.
As opposed to linking it strictly to enrollment, so that shows you how valuable that floor is.
So if the executive budget does change their mind or whatever their strategy, that may impact us as well. Something to consider as we prepare twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The SUNY twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget request is also asking for an increase in the investment from the current fiscal year with a total of a hundred, roughly a hundred and ten million dollars for projects that are happening across, for seventy-five projects that are happening across twenty-five different community colleges. This actually, capital projects jump significantly from previous years. And I know Chairman Stone indicated that even with that number, it's not significantly high compared to some of the projects that occur in our community. SUNY Erie did propose, included actually, three different projects in their budget proposal. One of them is the Facility Master Plan. The second one is to reallocate the SUNY Erie Sports Field from south to north and the implementation of the Banner ERP system, which at this point is on hold.
Right.
Slide nine, this I included actually after the fact. I'm like, okay, this is the twenty-twenty-three State of the State initial review. This is where Governor Hokel goes and gives us a speech of what she is proposing, some of her ideas and goals that she wants to achieve. And then this, these, these next three slides were strictly provided by SUNY, actually. They had a meeting with us to kind of follow up what State of the State is and what that means for community colleges, or if they said anything in addition that, that may, may, may potentially impact us.
Well, I think the biggest thing that I noted was the proposal to directly admit all high school graduates into community colleges. Now, we know we're open enrollment here, but what that really means is that a student in high school will receive a formal letter of invitation, coming here, make sure you understand you're admitted at the SUNY Erie. Here's our programs. And in theory, we could have been doing that all along, you know, right? But, but that's a big deal, writing to every high school student. That's, that's an innovative idea. I think there's a lot of folks out there who are, are dealing with so many life challenges that they may not have a strong understanding that I can go as SUNY Erie. I'm sure, we know that's the case. So this is breaking down, or trying to, at least one more barrier that prevents someone from taking an affirmative life step. So I thought, I was glad to see that in the list.
Yeah, speaking of that, Kathy actually sent out an email about tuition affordability that a lot of places do a lot of research, you know, based on is it affordable to even attend SUNY Erie or any of our local community colleges? And by far, SUNY Erie is affordable for majority of people compared to other local schools.
Well, Arda, thank you for that report and for pulling out those nuggets from the State of the State. That's helpful, too. That slide, I hadn't seen that. Or do you have more there? Go ahead.
So this, yes, this just kind of shows where we are right now. So basically, we are expecting the executive budget to be released by February first. And then between February first and April, I think they have like thirty days where the legislatures and the governor have meetings and then they, even the SUNY chancellor will actually visit and put his input, why his budget proposal is important or what they should do. So they do a lot of negotiations and even like, the Assembly actually releases their own version of budget. So this whole SUNY budget, the New York State budget overall is a huge budget. But by April first, we hope to have an executive budget approved and signed. And then we will be, actually, schools can actually receive some of those funds after that date. And then this last slide, the next slide, I think it's just an overview of what Governor Hokel said on her speech and some areas that she actually covered in here. She said she wants to create a policy for admissions across the university system. She wants to invest two hundred million in digital technology and IT infrastructure. I'm not sure if we will be impacted by that. Provide seventy-five million for innovation projects. Offer farmers internships and expand nursing programs, you know? These are just some of the things that she actually covered in her speech. Trying to tie minimum wage to the inflation, because every time, yes. Establish a commission to study the future of healthcare and provide funding for healthcare-related initiatives. Provide ten million dollars over two years of grants to align education with industry needs. And then invest twenty million in new early college, high school and PTEC programs, which is something that we are huge advocates and we're working closely with our districts. And then it says partner with school districts to allow high school graduates to directly enter community colleges. And then it says actually implement a reasonable tuition policy for state-operated campuses. So if they establish a policy for state-operated campuses, I'm not sure how that's going to impact us or if at all. So there's a whole list of other things, but that's pretty much it from this last slide.
Thank you, that was very helpful and.
Feel free to ask me any questions, yeah.
Just, I would say, all of us in college leadership, everyone in the room, look at that state budget and look at messages relating to it and see, ask yourself, how, what do we have that could qualify for this? Or what could we create to qualify for this? Because there's a lot of money floating around the state at the moment and has been for the last, since pandemic at least. Adiam, I know you met the new chancellor, you wanna talk about that?
Sure.
Or comment on Arda's presentation and thank you, Arda.
Yes, thank you, Arda. Yes, so we had, I met with him directly, he was at.
John King.
John King, Dr. King, in Buffalo on the thirteenth, January thirteenth. Specifically with University of Buffalo, we were invited. We were the only community college part of that luncheon, which was very exciting. Our trustee from SUNY, Yunus Lewis, was part of that discussion as well. He spent a lot of time, so one of the things in, prior to the meeting, in his introduction to all of the presidents of the SUNY system, he talked about his vision. And I gotta say, the first vision he has is student success, so I know it immediately resonated with me and a lot of the folks there. And then the second was equity and diversity. So I think a lot of the things that, that Arda mentioned, we're going to coincide with that. During that luncheon on the thirteenth, speaking with the UB team as well, we talked a lot about this idea of how do we create a pathway from high school to the University of Buffalo. So as we could, we know in our area, there is a. So as we could, we know in our area, there is an opportunity there for us. So one of the things that we talked about is that how does SUNY Erie fits into that mix, and what can we do? So out of that meeting, I do have a scheduled meeting with the Graduate School of Education Dean next week, I believe, to talk about our teacher prep program. That is one that everyone is sort of honing in on, as there is a huge need for teachers, particularly in the district, and so there is a plan to do that, to work with the Buffalo schools as well as with U B and then also at SUNY Erie. So we are meeting with that. So a lot of the things that Arda mentioned, that's his vision, and certainly, we have that great practice and things that we have done to really talk through a lot of the things that the governor is talking about, but as well as the chancellor.
I think John King is going to be a good ally for community colleges in New York State. This is a very exciting, he, as many of you probably remember, was the education secretary under President Obama, and now he headed the State Education Department, and now, now he's here. So as chancellor of the SUNY system, and I mean, that as a person from, in my experience, Melody, I see you nodding your head and others, this man understands the students we're trying to serve.
Absolutely.
Other comments, anyone else have an insight there? Melody, you.
Yeah, I've worked with John on several occasions, actually, he just agreed to do a, be a keynote for one of the things I'm working on. He's very personable, he's always wanted to come back to New York. He's, you know, he knows his stuff, and you know, he's very student-centered. He was when he was over the state, when he was the Secretary of Education, and he's just going to bring a tremendous amount of resources, and I think he's just going to be a huge advocate for community colleges.
I would just suggest, if you, if anyone here has relationships with him, whether it be you, or if we could get him to speak to our students at, say, graduation, I'm just throwing out an idea. And if he wants to underscore his, the importance of community colleges and speak at one of the largest community colleges in the state, one that's, you know, gone through some stuff, we're like the city this year. The Bills.
I'll reach out to Tia Borders, that's his, his secretary, who's coming with him from that trust.
You know, and if it's not graduation, some other event or something, I think this is a great opportunity for us.
He is planning on visiting SUNY Erie, so he is coming, I'm not sure when, but he is coming to.
Well, then we should, we should make that special.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's the head of the Board of Regents as well.
Yeah.
Incredible background. This is amazing background for this job. Are you set?
I am all set. Thank you.
Now, we'll go through sort of, well, we'll go through our committee reports, some of which might be quick, others might be a little longer, but then we're going to get to a couple of reports, we're going to have an executive session, and we're hoping to wind up by noon, because we have a hard departure at noon, and that may apply to more than one of us. So policy and governance, Melody?
So we did not have anything to meet about, so we are tabling that report out until next month.
All right. And Carrie, strategic planning and assessment as different from technology.
Yes. We actually, our January meeting got canceled, so we did not meet in January as we normally would. We do meet every month, our next meeting is February seventh, so unless somebody has something they want to, I don't think we do, nothing to report.
And then let's move to technology, and we are going to discuss this in executive session as well.
Yes.
But I do think it's appropriate to say a few things here in the public meeting about our general approach to what's going on here.
Okay, well, we had our meeting earlier this week, January twenty-third. We have now an expanded group of people and an expanded group of topics. Our committee had previously been, sort of, had a limited focus of the Workday ERPs and the more technological rolling out of how everything was coming out in our ERP, and not too much of a wider focus. We've added a few additional people so that we can cover some additional topics, which we did the other day, which would include infrastructure, academic, and user technology as well as information security. So you're able to have a more well-rounded conversation with those additional people and the additional topics that we were hitting on. With regard to the Workday ERP, Kathy, were you going to?
Yes, do you want to do that in the second?
I'd like to at least make sure the group knows the general direction we're going, because we have some technical things to talk about in executive session, but the fact is, this is a big factor in all of our lives, you know? What is the ERP system we're using? You've seen some fluctuation in the direction that we've gone, we're going in this area. There's been pushes and pulls, and I think it's time for the board to fully understand what the college feels it needs here in this area. We've vetted it through the Technology Committee, we've had a detailed report from Kathy and others on the senior executive staff, and while we will be talking about it in executive session, some of the specifics and steps, I would like the college community to have an understanding of where we are collectively now.
So, is it, I'm going to go through the recommendation.
Yeah.
The recommendation page of the report that was distributed for executive session. So after considerable investigation and dialogue with end users on campus, college leadership is recommending that the college remain with Workday. This decision is grounded in evidence of costs, significant costs upwards of twenty-seven million dollars over five years, which given Arda's report, I think it's clear we don't have those resources, and given the EC F S A report, it would cause us even further complications. Our current H R crisis, the extreme layoffs, and the rate at which we have people leaving the college is also affecting this decision. And the kind of financial and human capital expense of maintaining three ERP systems, and the lack of college-wide involvement in the decision to implement Banner, those are the kind of four driving factors. So we are seeking, leadership is seeking authorization to negotiate and effectuate the termination of business relationships formed to advance the implementation of Illution Banner, which will include termination of previously executed agreements with Illution and SIG. The financial impact we can discuss later. But I just want to articulate that we recognize that the cost of terminating this project could appear to be a waste of public dollars, but the college has recognized the following value for the costs incurred, and the costs in general are going to be under, under a million, or probably around eight-hundred thousand. But the, so the, what we've learned from that expenditure is through the I-Tech C I O services, we had six months of service from I-Tech. It has allowed us to rebuild relationships between I T S and the college functional areas, it's broken down barriers that had existed before, and established new operational procedures that have provided more autonomy to the I T S ERP group. It has revealed a depth of knowledge and the extreme management skills that this team has. The Illution Banner demonstrations allowed all of our functional area leaders and teams that, to see things that they had seen, that they had heard that Banner would do, were not as clean as they had imagined. The team all indicated that they would be losing efficiencies acquired when Workday was implemented, and that additional software would be required to maintain the current operational processes, and the cost of those systems exceeds our Workday cost annually. SIG Corp. discovery sessions, all functional area teams from across the college engaged in fifty-four hours of dedicated guided work sessions over three weeks, discussing the pros and cons of our current operational workflows. From these sessions, each team created a list of pain points and started to prioritize the critical needs for addressing those pain points within the existing system. And then finally, one of the things that I was most interested in, if we went to Banner, was the help and guidance of CICUS with our SUNY reporting. And I'm happy to report that after a year of being in Workday, so we've been in Workday student for one year, Workday is meeting or exceeding the needs of all the college's compliance reporting. We do still have work to do on validation and business practices to ensure that the data is being put in the system cleanly, but we, we have a light at the end of that tunnel. Reporting assistance from our current partner hereon has enabled the college to lay foundation for healthier and more reliable data governance structure than has been realized in the past. And for those, those are just some of the many things that we gleaned from the expenditure to date. And this was research that, that should have probably been done ahead of time, so I just am grateful for the opportunity to share that with you. And talking across the board, I do believe this is the wisest decision for the sustainability of the college.
It's a difficult and painful subject, right? Because we all interact with this platform, and we've all seen it go from colleague to, what, Workday came in. And Workday might not have been ready for primetime back in the day, almost certainly wasn't, at least with respect to the student module, but it was adopted here, and then, you know, we had a push going the other way, you know? Workday isn't going to work at all, and we have to go back to what everyone else does. It was time for a careful analysis by thoughtful teams of people here, in our judgment as a board, to look hard at this. And Carrie, I'd like to thank you at the Technology Committee level for caring about this and for chairing several meetings where we really seriously thought about this. And, you know, sometimes in public, I think Len said to me a month or two ago, you never know what's coming at you in the public space, right? We're all in the public space here, we have a storm, we have financial issues, we have technology issues, but our job is to try to be thoughtful and at all times try to do what is in the best long-term interest of the college. Don't let a mistake, if there was a mistake made, be compounded and go, and made even worse. So sometimes leadership can be difficult or even embarrassing, but I think the right thing to do is to understand the impact it would have if we continued along a path that to very thoughtful people here at the college seem disruptive and destructive to lots of valuable people here at the college.
Just for, to clarify and give a little bit of context to everyone who hasn't been in those technology meetings, we have a very robust plan in place to optimize Workday. So it will include, we have a timeline, we have a S O W ready to roll, starting in February hopefully, that is going to address the concerns that we have garnered from the community at large about the student portion and financial aid. So we will be ready to rock and roll with that as soon as possible, and we have a very robust two-year plan to get Workday up to the requirements that we have at the college.
I think what was new, at least for me, and I think for some of the trustees, was the fact that Workday was not being perceived universally as an abject failure. There were parts of it that were good, and abandoning Workday would lead to people leaving in frustration, perhaps?
Yes.
You know, who had been trained up on Workday, and that doesn't mean that we had to do this decision. And I think whatever decisions were made back in twenty-sixteen, last year, people were trying, all the people involved were trying to make the best decision that they could or thought was appropriate. But I think what maybe we've done a little differently here is just stopped, paused, and said, all right, those closest to the problem, please, think about this collectively, and let us know what your thought is. And Kathy, your skill set, I think, is particularly well-suited for this task, because we know what you did with Middle States, we've seen your specialty project expertise firsthand. This was a doozy of a specialty project. And I'm glad that you were on it, and there were others, you know, I've mentioned Carrie and her committee, I've sat in on some of those committees now as board chair, and Melody's been involved in others, Adyem right along. This is something we all care about, down to the last person, and we don't, we don't want to be anything but transparent about this with the college community. Yeah, we're going to talk about it in executive session, there's negotiations and so forth, but I felt like this is too big to just not talk about here. And this is not to disparage anyone in the past who has made some effort in this area one way or the other, but we're here now, and we think this report that we've received, after a great deal of on-the-ground consideration, shows us the best path forward.
Thank you. So just to, one more thing I would like to say is, we did have on our functional committees, we, functional teams that met with State Court, there were some committee chairs from faculty representation from the Senate, and so like Brian Millville and I believe Sabrina, they were in some of the meetings regarding the workflow of advisement. So we know that there are some concerns with the way the advisement works in Workday, and we will be bringing that to Senate next month to get some folks to come and join the worker, working group.
Perfect, I was actually going to mention that in my report, that I'd be happy to participate myself or supply Senate representation.
We would value that.
Yeah.
We really need everybody in the mix on this. We have to be this.
For sure, and, you know, from the faculty perspective, you know, Workday was clunky at first, but as I've worked with people to especially register students for the spring semester, we kind of are in a group now. It doesn't take thirty minutes, it's ten-ish to fifteen to do the, you know, the electronic component on Workday, and people are getting used to it, and I think switching would also.
That's encouraging. I just would ask, Adyem and me, Joe, you've had some thoughts on this too, just to share with the group, we're having an open discussion here, you know, outside the technical part of it, but, you know.
Yeah, we, most of I T S thought the decision was made in haste to go to, to just abandon a Workday, which, which has taken many years to implement. Mina led that project, put a great team together, and then we just saw, you know, all of a sudden that everyone's saying that it's not the system, it's not functional. We did not see it that way, we know there was some deficiencies in it, in some parts of it, just because it was a release product, but I mean, from the H C M side of it, Workday is a leader in ERP when it comes to that, so, you know, we have all faith in the world that Workday's not going to abandon their, their student side of this product. So, you know, and then especially when layoffs started happening, it was just, we knew that you can't really implement an ERP system like that when you have so many places of knowledge, of pockets of knowledge, leaving the college, and then you're trying to do this, and then the financial situation on top of it, it just seemed like it was going to be a perfect storm for the demise of big parts of the college and stuff. And as you said.
If not the college.
We did, we did lose a lot of people because of the decisions, you know, that were, seemed to, you know, that were going to come down and stuff like that. So, you know, I know we lost, you know, a lot of good knowledge on this and stuff, but the plan that has been put together, the discussions that have been taking place, it's brought, you know, the I T S department back together, you know, all the discussions with the student service areas and stuff were, are great to have, to understand the deficiencies, where we can impact it, where we can improve, so I think we have a great plan going forward. And I'm glad the action was taken down, like you said, you know, we couldn't keep going down the same road and stuff, I think it would have been a very poor decision.
Thank you, Joe, and you're, you're, you're spearheaded the team.
Absolutely. So I think it's that concept of coming from a strength rather than from deficiency, and I think that's what we were kind of operating, but I think what, I think right now, that plan that we have, and we'll definitely come back and talk to the entire college community after we get the appropriate approval, I think people will see where everyone will fit in, because this is also another thing that we all have to sort of move in the same direction. So that whole idea takes a, sort of a child to raise a village, right? But we all could be in that same village, if we're not moving in that same direction, it does not work. So I think that's the really concept of that, we have to do this from a different perspective. And then this idea, assessment and assessment and assessment, that is what we need to do, that is what saved us on Middle States, is that we were able to demonstrate that just because we have idea, that doesn't mean it's a perfect idea, or it's going to work, but the key is that we have to always kind of go back and assess what we think we were going to do or are doing, and then come back and revisit, revisit that. So the idea of constant improvement, and this is not the end, because sometimes we think, okay, this will solve everything that we have, and that is not the case, right? It's that process, it's that understanding, it's that ability for us to assess as a college, is the ability for us to reflect on the leadership level, as well as the college community to say, okay, you know what, this. Lastly, I think this goes back to our students. So we question that, did we hear any comments of our students about, as relates to Workday? Not really. And we asked the different areas of the college, so our students are just moving along, as long as we don't do, you know, they just, so I think that was the other key indicator for us, is that our students would be loud, and certainly, some of our board members would hear it, and as relates to this specific area, we did not hear that from our students. So that is also key, that we want to make sure the end user, in this case is our student, we were not hearing anything from our students. So it's really our ability to work on this much differently and see it differently. So I think the plan that we have, that we will present and then propose, present that to the college community, will demonstrate how we can move forward in a positive direction.
It's been a hard thing for the board to. It's been a hard thing for the board to understand and deal with, even despite heavy work over many years, trying to get our arms around this and understand, not just this board, but prior boards, lots of trustees. And Len?
Just a question for Kathy. Your presentation about the revaluation and reimagining, you know, what we've been working on for the last few months when it came to this, you mentioned the extreme layoff proposal. How did that impact the review that you did? Did that contribute to the change in getting back on track?
Yeah, so we have some significant staffing concerns in various areas of the college. And if we're going to implement a new ERP, folks are not only doing their normal daily tasks, but then they're also simultaneously being asked to build a new system parallel to it. And the, I don't think that it's wise to request that of our staff at this point in time because they're already overburdened by doing additional work because of the layoffs.
So we have to address some of that?
Yes, we do. So, so one of the things that we're working on, we have, we're rebuilding the ITS team. The ITS team has been decimated over the past few years, so we're going to be posting some positions for that. And then when we're going through the areas that, the functional areas of the college, we will be looking to make sure that the operational processes and the way that we're using Workday is conducive to the number of people that are in those offices. And where necessary, we may need to hire additional.
As appropriately.
As appropriate.
And that's one of the things we had to, and that was, just to know, that was also part of the original, the proposal within Banner as well, that they were staffing and that. I think what we did though is really talked to the expert in the ITS and said, "Okay, who do we have?" And I got to tell you, in speaking with those ITS individuals, we have very talented individuals who would not have to do this and have the opportunity to really, yeah, to really excel in their position. And they're just, you know, feel very empowered and will really take us into this journey.
Well, it's, it's, it's a tough topic. It's one that we've grappled with for years as a college. And it's time, I think our feeling here on the board was this just needed a pause and some thoughtful reflection. And that position was prompted in large part by senior executive leadership here, starting with our officer in charge, Kathy, Erickson, everyone has been in the mix on this. And then kind of channeling it through Carrie and her committee to the board as a whole, broad discussions, and this is where we wind up. So, you know, we, if this is a mistake, I hope it's not a mistake, but I don't believe it is. I feel like we've taken good counsel. When you're, when you've got a tough call, it seems to me the best way to do is to have as many voices in the mix as possible and especially those closest to the situation. I really appreciate everybody's input from around the edge of the room today on not just this, but other subjects we've talked about. And, you know, we're human and as Len says, things come at you quick. But we're trying to do our best and we think we are doing our best with this decision.
We greatly appreciate you all listening and helping, you know, giving us the opportunity to present our concerns. Thank you.
And then just have it out here in public. There's no point in not being transparent about what's happening here. Carrie, anything to add to the end of that?
I just wanted to thank the team and, you know, our committees and our board by extension can only be as good as the information and the input and the work that's being done behind the scenes and the information that's trickling up to us. And I feel very confident in the current team that is in place now, that all of that is, is happening. And it makes our decision-making a lot easier for us.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That's a good, good conclusion. All right. I think, interesting technology report. Thank you. [laughter] Len, we're going to marketing now and we have an item for approval.
Yes. This is the resolution, and I know Erickson and others, and Mike has been working on this, please join us for a while now. And this will allow us to bring on a outside vendor, somebody that the group went through the RFP process, or a RFP process to determine who would be the best media partner. And the Martin Group has emerged as the, as that firm. And the whole idea is to really update and advance our advertising capabilities in all areas, digital and traditional media, what have you. So I'd like Mike to sort of put the finishing touches on this and tie this up.
Sure. I think, you know, I'm excited to bring this forward because I think this is the first thing we've talked about today that actually talks about the other side of the equation, which is revenue. And this is going to be a great way to help bring in more revenue, I'm very confident of that. The other thing I'd like to point out is that this is not a request for more money. This is a request to spend the existing money that we have just differently and more strategically. So basically, it's a three-year contract in which we would be bringing in a media partner to help us do a much more complete process, evaluation, et cetera, in the process of all forms of advertising. As a reminder, the college has not done any, any digital marketing in its history in what you would consider the traditional sense. We've done digital ads within traditional local media, but we're not doing things like Google search or retargeting methods across various platforms like Google, YouTube, Pandora, streaming services, et cetera. So this is, it's a three-year contract, as we say, we say a budget of up to $500,000 for the first year. So just to help put that in perspective, this line item, which exists in this year's budget, is currently at $400,000. We would love it if we could leave ourselves that wiggle wound so that we could expand that up to $500,000 in years two and three, if we're seeing, you know, return on investment from expecting we will and if we see value in doing that. I did just put a little, a little asterisk here, just to kind of give you a little perspective on this from the fiscal implication. There was a recent Simpson Scarborough survey that found that institutions spend between $429 and $623 per enrolled student on marketing. If you were to take the lowest end of that spectrum, that means a college of our size would be spending, please don't laugh, nearly $2.8 million on advertising per year. I'm not suggesting that. But I do think this gets us at least closer and a decent start down that road. And just to give you a sense for where we are this year, of course, we had spent some money already in this year's budget. We spent, as of the middle of December, we had spent about $70,000. That number's probably a little closer to maybe 85 right now. But this at least gives us enough money left over to make a difference this year and then we'll start fresh with an extra fiscal year budgets.
This will, Erickson, I know you're going to be talking about enrollment. This ties, of course, to that a lot. And, you know, I think candidly, we've, we've suffered on the enrollment side with the lack of this, but there's been a lot, a lot going on and, you know, it's time to make some decisions and move forward. I think this has been in the pipeline for a while. I think Len, you are comfortable with this and your committee is?
Yeah, absolutely. I've been staying in touch with Mike and with Eric over the last two months to get to where we are today, so we can approve this resolution and get on with this, you know, this critical need to move our advertising to a new dimension. It's just, we simply have not been able to, to do this in a way that was powerful in the community. And, you know, I think people comment about NIGG community and Genesee community and, you know, all the different ways that the other colleges advertise. We just need to enhance that and this takes us to the next level. And I think it's critical. Like you said, this is something that aimed at bringing more students and dollars in the door so we can strengthen this institution.
I'm encouraged for you, Mike, because I know you've been in limbo for a while here as you've started and we appreciate you hanging in there and assisting us in various ways as you've, as this has ramped up for you. And this is a big piece for you. And, you know, and as I mentioned, Erickson will be talking about enrollment, the impact of advertising on that and, you know, the best time to plant a tree is 30 years ago? The next best time is this afternoon? So I think what we should do, Denise, go ahead.
No, go ahead, finish your sentence.
No, just, just, I think what we should do is, we have this in front of us here, not in the, in the submitted materials, is bless this arrangement. I think it's been vetted appropriately at this point and it's time to move forward with this. But thoughts or questions before we put it to a motion?
Now I'll go. I guess my question is, how do you, and I can, I definitely don't know this, but how do you measure the ROI from this?
Sure. So they, in addition to the actual research that they provide and the recommendations they provide, and then the actual execution of buying the ads for us, they then provide reporting as well. So that ensures everything from tracking, which is just proof that it ran, and then the, the analysis of whether or not it was effective. There was the old, you know, if you watched Mad Men, the line, "Half of my advertising doesn't work, I just don't know which half." That's less of a reality nowadays because you do have measurement tools like this. You're never going to bet $1,000, but at least, you know, these are, these are very trackable. You know, it's very similar to how you would create a 1-800 number in the old days, unique for a campaign, so you could see if it was working or even more modernly, a new email address or a website, you can put what's called a pixel on these digital ads. So you can tell if someone has clicked on it, if someone has revisited your page and that sort of thing.
Okay. And because this ties to enrollment, are we tracking on the enrollment side, the "How did you hear about us" piece? So that's, that's my other thing. I see heads shaking, so I guess, yeah, yes, we are. And, and then the third piece, I guess, is more of, this is a pretty large contract for us, even though it's already in our, our budget, but this is something new. So where does it, where's the home for it to track the dollar amount? And I'm wondering, in addition to the function of the, the project, which lies in marketing, perhaps this needs to be in the, a budget report or marketing committee can bring a small report to the budget committee, just so we can kind of keep an eye on it. We, in the past, have seen that we have entered into contracts that were very underutilized. And so to avoid that, if we have just a, a good place of accountability would be great.
Sure. Can I just add a question to that because Denise, I think Denise makes a great point. I know you're acting in a consultant business for us right now and, I guess you're moving on. Well, my, my hope is that you stay, we need a conduit between the Martin Group, and I know Eric is part of that and, and others as well, but we do need somebody, as Denise said, you know, get a functional report maybe every month, but also somebody to manage the relationship between Martin and the college. So we are burning on all fronts to get, to be as effective as possible. Are you going to continue in that role or are we talking about it or?
Sure. So the, you know, just so everyone's aware, this department right now is 1.5 humans and I'm 1.5, so that is a challenge. And the other full-time person is a graphic designer and so not, not his primary area but expertise. We do have two searchers going on though that would add two full-time people to the team. And really, this does need to be a team effort. You know, you have different people that will be, we will all be working with this vendor in various capacities. This, this is a line item within the MarCom, you know, budget, so I would assume and prefer that that continue and certainly we will continue to report as, as we've done at least since I've been here about the advertising work. So, you know, and then, yes, that would be my, my hope is to continue on, you know, in this, in this part-time capacity. But I think that's, that will suffice certainly, once we have those additional bodies in place.
So we're in the process of working that out.
Yes.
Okay.
So my question is, to what extent does this contract and this relationship with this vendor cover the development of the ads as opposed to the buying of the ads? I'm just wondering what we're spending on sort of getting our brand together, making a cohesive sort of between our strategic plan and all the, everything else?
So Eli, the other person on our team is Jerome Williams and he's an incredibly talented designer. And I think, you know, he, he can do a lot more even than what he's done to date. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about our ability to create the creative end of this. Now, there are some things outside of that scope that we will need to do in things such as video development, you know, as we're getting, doing more video. We have used a longstanding vendor with the college, which is very well-respected in the, in the market, Buffalo Advertising Management. I see no reason why we would change that, so they would supplement as needed. And of course, the Martin Group has those capabilities in-house as well. And if we choose to utilize those at any point, we can do so. It would just come out of that, that budget and therefore that would be less money to actually spend on the advertising. But that, that may be a choice we'd like to make at some point if, if it comes, if it comes to that. But, I mean, we, we know, as Adyam said earlier, we, we know, we know our story, we know what we want to do to tell our story. But you have to make sure that you're using the right tools to tell the story or else you're just wasting your breath.
Can I also make one other comment? This reporting to the board is very, very important and so the whole college community has a sense that this marketing thing is really being wrapped up and being effective. Dr. Volkan, before he left, he said that the marketing committee should, you know, meet periodically and, you know, certainly it sounded reasonable to me. I guess it's my feeling right now for at least a while, that we should be having some sort of monthly update, reevaluation of how things are going. This is a critical juncture now with, with bringing on Martin and your role and how we constitute this marketing effort here. So what are your thoughts on that?
I mean, I, I'm not opposed to that. I would just say we, we have.
I'm not looking to say we, let's meet every month for the next five years. I, I just think that we're at a critical stage here right now and the members need.
Yeah. And I think it's worth sharing the timeline of this. Now, because of the size of this, after this meeting, we still have to then go and get the county approval. That puts us into February and then we have to execute the contract and bring them on board. And there will be an onboarding process a couple of weeks to get them up to speed on us and our, you know, we'll give them input, they'll come back with some recommendations. We'll probably do some back-and-forth weekly. So, you know, I want to be very real with this. Best-case scenario, we're probably not in market advertising until late, I would say late May, uh, March, excuse me, March, which is not ideal. So to that point, there won't be a lot to say prior to that.
I understand.
So, but I think once we're off and running, and I have no, no problem with that, you know, we've been, as I say, we've been spending these dollars, so that, that part's not new. Hopefully, we're just going to be spending them much, much, certainly more broadly and hopefully much more effectively.
I do want to echo what Len just said though, because I, I think that the college is at such a critical point with everything that's happened over the last year between presidents coming and going and the storm and, and everything that our, and everything that was just said about the brand, not only, you know, the strategic plan and advertisements and sort of reimagining the, the image that the college is putting out to the community. And to echo back from the start of the meeting, you know, highlighting such partnerships as New Bison's partnership and, you know, the culinary students and the nursing partnerships and all of those. So I, I would, I would agree with, with Len that whether it, you know, maybe February is not a good time to do it, but, but getting back into those more regular marketing meetings and I think that would go a long way with Denise's concern as well about keeping an eye, I guess, on this contract and making sure that it, it meets the objective. So I would just agree with you on that point.
We'll work this through.
Okay. Then we move on, keep, we'll keep it moving, but thank you, Mike, for your engagement and for this. We will need to, I think, take up a resolution to approve this, which I think we're doing in public session here.
Right.
So what this has been is it's a side, side handout. And you see the financial implications if you look at the top of the second page and Mike talked about those. So I would like to propose a motion now from someone for an adoption of, an approval of this arrangement with Martin as outlined here in our handout.
Now, I'll move it.
Subject, of course, to the legislature's approval.
Yes.
Okay. So second, Denise? Thanks, Len. And any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye and opposed. All right. So we have an approval of that and we wish you well with it. I feel like, yeah, let's plant that tree. And here we go. So.
Thanks, Len.
And thank you, Len, for, you know, being on top of that and for what this next few months, I like your idea. So there we have. So report of the chair. As with all of our meetings, a lot of our discussion is wide-ranging and we cover a lot. As with all of our meetings, a lot of our discussion is wide-ranging, and we cover a lot of subjects before I formally go into a chair report, but I do have a couple notes that I will share quickly, because we do have to make a little space for an executive session. We want to hear from Adim as well, and from Colleen, and, and Marcel is not here, so we won't have student. But, um, just so people know, um, I, I just wish to express gratitude, as we have throughout the meeting, to all those involved around the edge of the room, here at the table, for everything that's gone on. It's a lot. And I'm talking to Adim once a week, at, well, many times a week, but we have a standing meeting every Monday at 10:00 to talk for an hour about whatever's going on. So if any of you around the room have a thought or a concern, and all that should be discussed either by Adim or Jeff, or some extension of either of us, share an email, and we'll get it onto the agenda for our weekly call. And of course, we have many calls in between, just want to make people aware that that's happening. I remain quite concerned about board vacancies. This is the thing, you've heard me brow-beating. And, um, you know, today, I was worried that we might have to cancel this meeting, because here we are, six, two with very legitimate excuses, that's, that's our eight. We need two more on this board, and we need it not just for quorum, but for input. This is very valuable input we get every time we meet. Two more voices would be great, and we need to achieve that. So I, I spoke with the county executive, and he said he would take it up. Len, I'm kind of looking at you, too.
Actually, um, just to, I have something to report on this.
Okay.
Um, so last week, I was in Albany on some other county business, or some other business, and I ran into the deputy appointment secretary, a gentleman named John Ward, who I talked to previously about our logjam. He was acting as the interim appointment secretary for a while. They've now appointed someone else, but he's deputy, and he's still in the middle of things. And I just said, hey, you got to get us a couple trustees in here. And he goes, I know, I know, and, um, you know, of course, at the same time, this is a chaotic time in Albany because we're doing the budget. They had a big deal about this chief judge last week. I, I had a chance to speak with Kathy just for a few minutes, and I have to admit, I didn't get to say, give us two weeks to see people, because she had other things on her mind. We just had a chance to stop and say hello. But I, more importantly, I said to John Ward, we have to get two new trustees here. We are really, you know, a couple people miss a meeting, and we're in trouble. You know, we can't conduct business.
I love this board, and the people who are volunteering here, very happy. But we, boy, two more great people would be just what we need, because we got a lot of things to deal with. And this is not that hard. We should get, they're great people in this community.
There's a logjam statewide, I mean, I think it's going to hit, and they're going to just go bald.
I was in the shower this morning thinking, if I have to cancel this meeting after dragging everybody out, I'm going to be pissed. Sorry. Okay, so board vacancies.
Sorry, just think, I'm just thinking about losing quorum now that we, do we need to go into executive session now in order to make sure we can vote on what we need to vote on?
We do in, like, five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, quickly. Yeah. Uh, on January 11th, I went to the convocation here, and I spoke to the broad college community. A lot of faculty members were there, always great. Sat down randomly at some tables and took a lot of input, and I, you know, there's been a lot of, of turmoil around the college, so, you know, hopefully was able to be constructive in that respect. Uh, I enjoyed that opportunity. I always like going to convocation, and I would recommend, any other trustees or anyone in the room, it's a great event. Quickly, everyone wonders about, okay, what are we doing with search officer in charge? I didn't mention that enough, as I should have, a convocation, but basically, our thinking has been this, that, uh, uh, we've had a vacancy in the office of president since December 19th. We had the holiday period of time, and then, of course, the city situation. So I was not going to put another brick on Adim's head or on anyone's head about this, because we were dealing with a, a major crisis. However, we do have plans to undertake a search. Uh, it, it may or may not resemble what we've done in the past. You know, we've had full-blown searches. We do have some engagement from our search firm, who has said they will assist us uh, on terms that are very favorable, given the history here. And so we think we will tap that, and we will have a degree of search that is to be further refined by the trustees, perhaps when we have our retreat this coming month. So we'll know exactly what we're doing, but it, it is moving, I just want, you know. And the trustees are very confident that we have a great senior executive staff team in place, led by Officer in Charge Adim Sagai. We appreciate that. And I don't think that the college is lacking leadership, or adrift, or anything. If anything, if anyone were to suggest that, simply point to the city campus situation.
Yep.
That was serious leadership and serious results, and, you know, we're, we're okay. It's a lot to ask of our officer in charge, who's also our provost, and we're working on that, too. So I just wanted to say something about that. It's not completely, you know, figured out exactly the timing, but I don't think we're talking about, uh, years or weeks. It'll probably be a, a matter of months where we sort this out and get a permanent arrangement for college leadership. And that will be a further, a lot of further discussions among the trustees, but I'm very pleased with the way things are going, and I think we all are. Uh, the search, uh, just want to mention Dr. Rosa Gonzalez having won the MLK Leadership Award. She is a delightful person. I got to know her at the Buffalo State Holiday Party, and maybe you were going to bring it up.
Yeah, that's okay, no, that's okay, but she did. It was on a Sunday. Um, uh, she was among many who are alumni as well, so I got all their cards. They're going to be speaking to us, but it was an awesome, um, event that we went, I believe. Cynthia Buckley was there, maybe others, too, but it was a wonderful event that, that I participated with other folks as well. Thank you.
That is great, uh, and if you haven't met Dr. Gonzalez, that's, she's terrific. Um, next, uh, board meeting will be February 16th. Mel, just a little heads up, I have a medical appointment at 10:50 on that day, so we're going to have to either be shorter, or start earlier, or have you finish.
Sounds good.
So I'm going to think about that. We'll, we'll talk about it between then. I couldn't make my appointment different, and I don't want to change the date again.
No, I agree.
Um, the meetings with Adim I mentioned. I have also been meeting regularly with County Executive Mark Colencars and his Chief of Staff Ben Swanikamp, both of whom are highly constructive partners of the college, uh, and they, they're helpful, and we talk about a lot of things, uh, some of which makes it way to the table here. I would say, right now, on their mind, the main thing, the bills thing has been, has moved along well, and they've got those contracts pretty well signed up, and, you know, we've been a partner in that, as you know. The governor's executive budget I mentioned February 1st, let's be watching for that. I attended a legislative breakfast last Saturday in, in my normal day job, and it was great, circulating a lot of county officials. I talked to Howard Johnson and others from the county legislature, and some state people, so it was good. And I, I talked about Erie Community College, uh, effectively there. ERP transition, a small note, a long discussion, but we talked about that. Technology committee meetings, um, you know, that's been happening, and that ties into the discussion we have. And then, last note I had was a retreat for the trustees. We just need to take a breath in the wake of the city thing and the, um, oh, just everything, to figure out exactly when we are getting together for a thoughtful discussion on many of these same topics, as we do every February roughly. So that will be sorted out with Kelly and polling, unless we have a date already. So that is my report of the chair, coupled with all the other things we talked about. Officer in Charge Adim Sagai, uh, again, like me, we've covered a lot of subjects, but anything to fill in?
Um, just the only thing that I want to highlight, we are going to be a part of an interview with the Buffalo News with respect to Northland. Uh, so this is a, an effort to really highlight our mechatronic program, so that's going to be on the first. I'm excited, it's going to be our student, it's going to be, uh, obviously Stephen Tucker, myself, and our faculty, uh, talking about the awesome, um, experience and success that we have at Northland. So that's happening to trustee Stone, uh, the, um, Chair Stone, uh, the county exec, myself, and trustee Stone, as well as Leslie, our attorney, are going to be having, and Ben, are going to also be having a monthly meeting to really talk about key issues of the college. Um, and then I mentioned about the UB, I'm just trying, and then, I know Colleen is going to talk about this, but we do have a, a celebration of women and girls in sport that's happening at our facility on, on Saturday. Um, and I'll let Colleen talk a little bit about how this is really exciting. So I do have copies for the board members, if you have time to come, uh, so that will be an extension. And then the last thing I want to mention is that I did meet with Hispanic Heritage Council, Council, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, we had a very robust discussion, uh, about 75,000 Hispanic in our community in Western New York, 45,000 within Western, uh, within Buffalo. Uh, if you look at our enrollment as, as it relates to the Hispanic community, we're like 3%. Uh, so we have a huge opportunity to engage with that particular community, as well as the immigrant community. We'll have more. Um, we also spent a lot of time talking about the Hispanic Heritage Culture Institute that's coming, and it should be open 2024, uh, so we want to be part of this awesome opportunity and really self-serve the community, but more to come on, on this as well.
Thank you.
Was that quick?
And I got to rush, I got to rush Eric on enrollment a little bit, and Colleen from Senate. But Eric, some of, some of your parts have been covered, but enrollment?
Yeah, I can probably talk to it at a high level. Well, and you had shared about the governor's initiative and automatic high school enrollment. One thing to add to that, our admissions team, Phil and the counselors, we are doing that, we have been doing that. We help with our help with instant admissions events, where at the end of the event, the student is admitted, again, depending on the figure of people, high school graduation, and they actually get a letter. So they get, they leave that day with a letter that highlights the value of ECC. It has the county executive signature on it, as well as Dr. Sagai's signature on it, which has been very powerful for a lot of our incoming students. Our application's already for fall of 23, or 19%, compared to where we are currently at this point in time. Really, now the idea is how we convert them to registration. For fall, our unofficial numbers look like it's going to be around 2% down overall FTE. Uh, our continuing number is the biggest, um, area in which we dropped. When we look at that in spring, it's a similar story as well. Our interest in the new students coming in, transferring new students, is pretty steady, as it's been over the last few years, where you would see it if, if, or in the reports, too, you'll see the number of continuing students is arguably an area of great need. But what we want to highlight, and this goes into then Mike and the marketing side, is this is capturing as a whole institution. We have programs whose enrollment is growing, and there are other areas where that is not the case. So I think now, being able to have these strategic resources in place, we would then be able to target how we further supplement the programs that are growing, as well as how do we address those, in which that's not the case.
Thanks, Eric, and we'll make a little more space for this in future meetings, uh, to add to the ERP today. Colleen, Senate?
All right, all right. Um, hello, I'll make it quick. Um, my big pushes for this event that Adim highlighted. So it's a celebration of women and girls in sports. It's going to be at the Flickinger Center. It is a partnership that was created through our phys ed and health and wellness department. Our department chair is Jackie DePaul Rocco, and some of her fellow faculty, Kristen Raven, Amanda Dixon, uh, made a partnership with Buffalo Public Schools and their after-school program, which is through Better Self Health. It is for building brighter futures, and it's, um, going to be in collaboration with Buffalo Public Schools, grades three through eight for girls. Um, and we have a lot of women that are from the college that are spearheading and running this event, very girl power, faculty-led, and we are hitting all the different initiatives that we talked about here today. So we have our students that are going to be running, uh, sports sampling for, uh, different areas of the school. We're going to have our women athletes from basketball, volleyball. We have a cross-country runner who is, got a national title that is going to be there as well. Yes, and a nursing student as well, uh, that are going to be running these, um, sampling. We also worked with Buffalo, early middle college, and we will have some of those students coming in as well. Legislature Monica Wallace will be kicking off the event with an announcement to make a resolution on the floor of the New York State Legislature's Office, or, uh, meeting on, uh, February 1st, which is the, uh, start of Women in Sports Month. And, uh, as well, we have, uh, students from our Communication Arts Program with our faculty chair, Amber Reinhardt, and our marketing students with our faculty chair, Colleen Holmes, both out of South Campus, also very awesome women. Their students are coming out to look and take pictures and create a marketing tool that we can use to, uh, for future events. We have, um, faculty alum coming in to also participate in this, as well as, uh, the entire goal is to create a partnership so that we can create workforce development opportunities for our students, which, again, is something that we've talked about several times today, and also internships through the Buffalo Public Schools, but also it can become a recruitment tool to get those students to be a direct pipeline to student offering. Um, it's going to be awesome, please show. Ladies, come, bring daughters, nieces. I'm going to be there, I'm bringing my sisters and my mother, who also raise very strong women, and it's, you know, it's going to be awesome. Please come, please join us, it's going to be great.
Thanks, Colleen.
On the flyer doesn't have time?
9:45 to 1:30.
Place?
Uh, Burr Flickinger Center. So Monica Wallace will be speaking about, uh, 9:50. We have a keynote speaker, actually, it's a friend of mine, her name's Lindsay Darkangelo. She's a national bestselling author. She wrote a book about the Women's National Football League, which will be turned into a screenplay. She will be there to talk about how she was one of the few girls in her neighborhood running and throwing the ball, playing football in the street, and which is going to relate to all the girls that, you know, are out there playing with the boys, uh, in the neighborhoods, and, uh, tie it all in. And then we'll do a sports sampling, where the student DJ is going to be getting our students warmed up to go to these things. It's a very faculty and student-oriented, and it's going to be awesome.
We'll have Kelly send the board, uh, the agenda and everything we have.
But more so, if this is out in public, can we put the, uh, the dates and everything on?
And I would encourage all the men in the room to.
Yeah.
That's right.
Of course.
That's right.
That's right.
We'll, we'll skip over, we have to go to executive session. Thanks, Colleen.
You got it.
Uh, we're going to, the state of the college will follow from our retreat. We'll figure out when we're doing that and who's doing that. Uh, ECC course opportunities, we'll, can we postpone that now, or just another?
Definitely.
I know that's been a little bit with Adim and.
No, we've got seven minutes.
Yes, exactly. New business, I don't suspect we have any of that, unless someone wants to bring something up. And then we will go to executive session, so, uh, folks around the room, we're not going to have a long executive session today, we can't. We just need to take a couple of actions and have some brief discussion, some of which, some of what we were going to do in executive has been brought out on the table today. So we'll be quick about that. I don't think there's any drama to hang around for necessarily, um, and it should be better a few, few minutes. So a motion, please, then, to go into executive session to per, for pending current litigation or for personnel matters?
I, I would motion a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
You need me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll be in exec. Okay. We are back from executive session, motion having been made to come out of executive session and passed. And while we were in executive session, we discussed several matters involving litigation and personnel matters, and took a couple of steps. One was to adopt a resolution, unanimously adopted, to following from our discussion during the meeting, to authorize the officer in charge to terminate the executed agreements with Alution and SIG, to move away from the banner transition and toward a continuation of workday. And the formal resolution will be made part of the minutes. The other step that we took, again unanimously adopted, was to approve the lease of space at a portion of South Campus currently underutilized, to facilitate use by Gilbane Turner, the stadium construction firm, for a variety of purposes. And we think that it will provide a good revenue stream for the college, and will give some of our students an opportunity to mix in and perhaps have internships in and around the stadium construction over the next several years. So with that in mind, we approved an arrangement under which some space would be leased at a significant rental payment to the college, which we felt was in the best interest of the college. That's a summary. Anyone wish to amend or correct any of that? If not, then we'll take a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
And approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned until.